Start the meeting. Stand for the prayer. Today, as the session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us for everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for the direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted the state of wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Sleet the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call. Counselor Drinkwater.
Here.
Counselor Elliott.
Here.
Mayor Leahy.
Here.
Counselor Mercier.
Here.
Counselor Noon.
Here.
Counselor Rourke.
Here.
Counselor Samaras. Counselor Chow.
Here.
Counselor Conway.
Here.
Aye, present. Thank you. Under Mayor's business, we have accepted communication from the city auditor. Need a motion to place on file by Counselor Conway, seconded by Counselor Drinkwater. All those in favor?
Aye.
City Clerk. Need to motion and accept and place on file minutes of the Economic Downtown Development Subcommittee, May 25th. Housing Subcommittee joint with Zoning Subcommittee, May 25th. City Council Regular Meeting, May 25th. Election Law Redistricting Subcommittee, June 2nd for acceptance. Motion by Counselor Samaras, seconded by Counselor Rourke. Counselor Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If it's okay with my colleagues, I'd like to take motion 10.5 out of order. We do have a couple of registered speakers.
Sure. Motion by Counselor Rourke, seconded by Counselor Noon to take 10.5 out of order. 10.5. Counselor Rourke, Counselor Samaras. Request City Council name the girls' and boys' locker rooms at Colley Memorial Stadium after John Blake Galvin Jr. Following the renovation. Counselor Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very quickly, before we get to our speakers. Everybody knows the deterioration of the locker rooms for both the boys and girls over at Colley Stadium. The manager has been very proactive with the track and the field. And there's money in the budget this evening we're going to talk about for the grandstand repair as well. With all that being done, the foundation that was formed a couple of meetings ago has worked with some people in the community. And based because of Blake Galvin, people wanted to give and support the renovation of the boys' and girls' locker rooms. Knowing Blake personally and know what kind of guy he is, I'll let the people that are here speak about him, do that. But it's a pleasure to be a city council to bring this motion forward. That's something that's going to really affect the boys and girls in the city of Lowell. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Samaras, did you want to say something before the speakers?
At this point, I'd just like to defer to the speakers, but this is an important night. I think we all know the condition of some of the properties out at Colley Stadium. And the boys' and girls' locker, as Counselor Rourke has stated, have been such disrepair. And to be able to take care of this and put this in the name of Blake Galvin, a really good person, I'd like to speak about him, but I have to allow our guests to speak first, please.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We have registered speakers, if you want to come up to the mic.
Michael Consler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Manager, Councillors. Just want to speak on behalf of Mr. Galvin. John Blake Galvin Jr., class of 1983, is one of the truly gifted athletes to grace the gridiron for Lowell High School. Blake went on to have stellar careers at both the college level as well as the professional level. Following graduation from Lowell High School, Blake won a full scholarship to Boston College. As a four-year letterman, he graduated with a degree in speech communications. Blake was a teammate of Boston College great Doug Flutie and competed in the Liberty Hall of Fame Bowl as well as the Cotton Bowl as a Boston College Eagle. During his senior year, Blake received the recognition from the ECAC for his outstanding play. At the conclusion of the season, Blake received the Boston College Unsung Hero Award and was one of four players on the team drafted by the NFL, including teammates Bill Romanowski, Dave Wydell, and Dave Nugent. Selected in the 11th round of the NFL and drafted by the New York Jets, Blake earned a position on the Jets roster. Over the next four seasons from 1988 through 1991, he was a standout special teams performer for both the New York Jets and the Minnesota Vikings. And it was in the mid-2000s when Blake came home to Lowell. Blake was one of the founding members of the Lowell Junior High School Football Program. This was a program that was created for kids that couldn't make or were overweight on the scale or could not afford to play in another football league in the community. He is presently a sales exec for WEI and remains a consistent volunteer for the city and Lowell. We ask you to join us to recognize Blake's outstanding achievements and longstanding community service. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Matt Lalasher.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Manager, members of the council. Matt Lalasher, I was before you a few weeks ago discussing the Lowell Athletics and Activities Foundation and our efforts and intentions to try to work collaboratively with the city to put ourselves in a position to better what we have out at Colley Stadium. There's no individual who I am, who I know of in the city who represents the excellence in sports and athletic activity more than Blake Galvin. And I think it is with great honor that Board Member Christopher Dick and I would like to present something in honor of Blake to the city through the strong fundraising efforts of the foundation. With a special thank you to Jim Hurscott from Princeton Properties, who has been very instrumental in this. We would like to offer a $100,000 donation to support this effort in the renaming of the locker rooms, boys' and girls' locker rooms at Colley Stadium. So. I'll leave this for everyone, and thank you very much. This is great.
Thank you. Sure. Counselor Samaras.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think this warrants a photo op. Let me tell you, Blake Galvin, it's just appropriate that something like this is named after him. Many students played sports at Lowell High School. And I was blessed to be headmaster for about 20 years. Mr. Conway was a housemaster. And we saw many students come and go. And, but we also know that many students, especially those that are in sports, aspire to go into the, if they could ever possibly into the pros, play professional sports. Very few do make it. And Blake was somebody that had the talent to make that break. And he showed by, he was an example. He showed by hard work what you can do. But for me, the naming of these locker rooms after Blake Galvin is not because of his success in professional sports. For me, it's because he came back to this community. He's an executive for a private company. But as a successful professional, a successful business person, he's come back into this community, as Mr. Counselor stated, started a football league, the students that was free. And what he did was, it's all about giving back to the community. And he showed, he has shown that. And we ran many tournaments at Lowell High School. We had many fundraisers for our scholarship program, which is now, you know, I think it's over $5 million now. We have the Athletic Hall of Fame. We have the Distinguished Alumni. All of these organizations have required funding. And I have to say, Blake Galvin either was a participant, that he paid to be part of that golf tournament, or he ran the golf tournament or whatever activity there was for fundraising. So I really feel that this is something that is justified. And I think this is something that will serve as an example to the rest of the community to be able to come forth and to help the students at Lowell High School. Blake has got that history. And we know we have many people in the city that want to be part of this process. And we look forward to what we have now going at Colley Stadium as something that will complete and make the new high school the best that it can be. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Counselor Chow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to congratulate Mr. John Blake Galvin Jr. and his entire family. And also want to thank the Lowell Athletic Association, Matt, Mike, and Chris for making it a lot easier for the city to make this tribute happen and to make it a success. It's a real showing that how the, somebody in the virtual like Mr. Galvin can make a big difference. And you also make a big difference to make this work. Thank you so much.
Madam Manager.
Just, I do want to thank the efforts of the nonprofit for what they have put together. You know, the locker rooms are in very poor shape. And unfortunately, it's tough to come up with the capital money when we're spending other capital money. So thank you for all of your efforts. It will certainly make a big difference for the athletes and the students and actually all the kids who use those locker rooms down at Colley Stadium. And I think perhaps it is appropriate to take, the council to take a picture with the speakers and those involved with the organization.
Mr. Mayor.
We don't often get a check for $100,000, so.
Mr. Conway.
Yeah, just very quickly, I think that this is, I'm very happy that a motion like this was brought forward. And thank you, gentlemen, for what you've done. You know, raising the money and as the same manager just said, it's very difficult to put together sufficient funds to get something done. And I think that's in great need. And when you look back, he has, as Counselor Samaras has mentioned, he's been a great role model throughout his entire career in sports. And he certainly did excel. But also, something that can be extremely more important, and that is, he is a gentleman and he's a good family person, too. And I think that is something that needs to be brought out besides just being a great athlete. So again, I applaud the idea of naming those locker rooms after Blake Galvin. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Mr. Counselor Elliott.
Well, I feel like I wanted to say just a couple of words. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
I almost didn't want to forget to vote for it.
No, no, no. Don't want to miss the vote. But again, like my colleagues, it's a fitting tribute for an individual that commits a lot of time, effort, and energy. And sometimes folks don't understand how much time it does take. But it's creating that junior football, the feeder system to the high school that, again, the role model that, you know, people in the community set. I think this is a fitting tribute. And, excuse me, putting, you know, putting up the money, that's, that is where the rubber meets the road. So I think this is a proud moment in the city and a fitting tribute. So happy I can support this vote. Thank you.
All right. Why don't we all come up for a photo in the front here?
Oh, we take that money. Oh, I want to take it home. I was going to take it home.
Great job, Galvin. Thank you so much. I will, I will.
It was pink. So being close to 7 o'clock, why don't we get into the general public hearings? 4-1 vote appropriation order. So what's the will of the body? We have the budget up, we want to ask questions answered? Do we want to set another date to go through the budget? Or usually, last few years, we've been doing it tonight. So Counselor Mercier.
I didn't even raise my hand, but I must have that certain look that means that I'm troubled by it. But anyway.
Sorry. Let me just open it up. Sorry. I'm getting yelled at here. So, okay. So we're going to open up the hearing for the FY '22 appropriation order. Okay. Counselor Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to City Manager, Madam Manager, are there people here tonight from the departments that if we have questions, they will come in? I don't want to put people out of their way. Are people here?
Some people are here. Everybody's here either on Zoom or in person.
Okay.
Everybody's available.
So what I have to say would probably not be conducive to this evening. But what I do want to say is my feelings about the budget. And let's not misconstrue my intentions. I think this is an excellent budget. But I think that the way that this is appearing, which we could call Conor Baldwin, Chief Financial Officer, if we had any questions, that's all well and good. But if I had a few questions to ask him, there might be some of my colleagues that had questions that I never thought of that I'd like to know the answer to, and I didn't have this opportunity to hear that. And I know in the past few years, we've had it the same way. And it seems like we passed this budget at a public hearing in like 10 minutes, 15 minutes. I think that we owe the public a little bit more than that. To put it in without a day on its own, to peruse it and talk about it, seems like we're shot changing the public to some degree. I don't mean any disrespect here to anybody. But I think that this is so important that when you put in that much time and effort, and I know it's tremendous, I think it deserves a little bit more respect than to just shove it in at a council meeting at a public hearing and that's it. I think there's more to it than that. I think that we have a budget, $464 million, almost a half a billion dollars. And we're going to take 10 minutes to check it out and approve it. Not that there's anything wrong in here, but I like people to hear a little bit about, we had more to learn about CDBG funding than we are this budget. That's my opinion. And the reason I'm so, I don't want to say I'm angry, but this, today, I had an opportunity to just ask a question. And this is what's bringing everything up here. And I don't, again, mean any disrespect, but when something aggravates me, I have to speak about it. I simply called the department and I asked, is there a Birm list? I want to put someone on the Birm list. Birm. I was told, well, there isn't per se, but we could have a Birm list when the plow goes out and ruins some of the Birm. We have an obligation to fix that. But those people that want a Birm now, it's not allowed. And I said, not allowed? Their yards are washing away in a rainstorm going down to the end of the street. You mean they can't have a Birm? No, we don't have any money because the asphalt went up. The price of the asphalt went up and we get a level fund budget. Madam Manager, I'm outraged. I'm angry. $464 million and we have no money for asphalt. For the people that pay taxes in our salary, we don't have that. In this budget, we have no money. Well, I was told, we don't even have enough money to fill the potholes. Am I in the Twilight Zone here? I can't believe what I'm telling you. And again, I mean no disrespect, but I'm flabbergasted. A half a billion dollar budget and we don't have enough money to fill the potholes? So let me see if I can get this straight. But yet, we will have a property damage claim for someone that went into a pothole and now is suing the city for damages of their vehicle. We can pay for that, but we don't have money for the, and I'm flabbergasted by it. I don't mean to go on and on, but it's bothering me that they had to level fund. Can I, and the last thing about this issue, did we have free cash left over from the last budget to the tune of like $7.1 million or whatever?
It was about $3 million.
Okay, $3. something. Where did that come from? Did it come from money within the budget or appropriation in the budget that we no longer needed?
No. It wasn't appropriations. Well, it could be in the sense that if there were positions unfilled, there was austerity measures, things like that. But it wasn't, there was no line item cut.
So we can't take that little bit, that money, and fill a damn pothole?
Well, Council, we do fill potholes. But let me just explain. So we have in the budget, there's a three million dollar city line for asphalt and potholes and the like. And then we also get chapter ninety monies, and that's about one point eight million. So, so a little under five million dollars for asphalt. And that's how, how it's been budgeted. And that's for roads and sidewalks and potholes. And it's a question of priority, I think. And I did speak with Commissioner Clancy, because at this time of the year, at this point in the year, we're at the end of the fiscal year, that fund is very low. So to, you know, they are trying to prioritize filling the potholes right now because there's some doozies out there. And so they're absolutely being filled. I think the point was creating new BERM is, is a budget, you know, not in the budget, not because the money isn't there. There'll be more money July first, assuming the council passes that. But these are priorities that we need to look at and also look into account. There is a, there are a number of requests for BERMs that, you know, DPW is looking at that we will certainly look at. But as far as getting it done right now in June, and maybe that's, you know, part of the conversation, but it isn't, one of the concerns we do have is the cost of asphalt, what's happened. And so, yes, we did ask departments to level fund the budgets, their budgets. And the reason is, even with level funding the budget, you see that there's still an increase because of other costs that have escalated. And so the department heads did do what we asked them to do. But when it comes to DPW, for instance, when we say level fund, because we're trying to keep the tax rate low, but then when the cost of asphalt almost doubles or more, then you can only do half as much. And that's not, that's not an excuse. It's just that's kind of what's going on. And so, you know, we may need to, especially when we go out for the next, you know, buying of asphalt, if it's so outrageous and yet our needs are so big, we need to, to look at that. And we've talked about that. But, so I guess my point is, we certainly do want to take care of, you know, the situation for neighborhoods, their roads, their potholes. Sometimes the BERM, I think, what was mentioned, sometimes it's damaged because, because of a plow or because of the winter. Creating new BERM is, you know, is against, an expense, but we need to look at that and say, what can we do? Just trying to balance all the priorities, Councilor. So as far as having the budget on the, on a council meeting night, I mean, that's if the council wants a separate night. I remember the days when we would have a separate night or nights or Saturdays. It hasn't been that way since I've been here, and I'm told not for about four or five years before that. And so this is the way we've done it. But if the council says would rather take up the budget on a separate hearing night, I mean, whatever the council wishes. It was advertised for a public hearing tonight, doesn't mean it couldn't begin tonight. But we're happy and here to answer as many questions, talk as long as the council wants to. I wish I had brought the, I found the budget from when I was mayor in two thousand and two. This is how thick it was. This is a much different situation today. And, and so on the one hand, we put as much information into the budget so that the council and the public, it's online, people can access it, look at it. So we want to be as transparent as possible. And as many questions that people have, we're happy to answer those. So whether it's tonight, it's always going to be a public hearing because that's the law. But whether it's tonight, or we go as far as the council wants and do it another night, that's perfectly fine, too. It's whatever the council wants.
Sure, it's not what I want, it's what I'm just suggesting.
Right.
And I'm not saying, let's do it this way. It is up to my colleagues. I'm just offering a suggestion. And, and let me just say this, I know that we're at the end of our fiscal year, but please rest assured that when July first and the first meeting in July comes, I am making that motion to do three houses on a particular street that sits on a hill and their, and their soil in front of their house at a rainstorm is washing down because they don't have a curb in, which is out of the question for money. And all I'm asking for is a BERM. The house down at the bottom of the hill, who initiated this request, has a six to eight inch depth, deep because of the washout. That is unacceptable in a city where this person and the rest of the people pay taxes and pay our salary. And I'm going to try to deliver, because when I go door to door or I talk to people, they're not asking me about economic development or the formula for this, that, or the other. They want public safety, and they want holes filled in their street. These people want a BERM, and I want to deliver. Thank you.
And, and, Council, we'll certainly look at these, these requests and try and address. I'm going to, you're going to hear this plug from me more than once. I know the state is awash in money. It's unusual, but they've got, they've taken in almost five billion more in tax revenue than they expected. I'm making this plea, please give more on chapter ninety money to cities and towns. It hasn't changed in years. And it would be so needed, you know, if they could up the chapter ninety thing. So between that and charter school reimbursement, but those make big differences for communities.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilor Elliott.
Seems like it's sort of a property destruction before there is a claim. What is the road, Councilor Mercier? I'll make a motion.
Barbara Street.
Barbara. Can we, motion that we have the Department of Public Works Commissioner look at Barbara Street to put BERM in this fiscal year? I mean.
Well, it won't happen, there isn't a budget this fiscal year. But we will certainly look at this.
There's no budget this year? Oh, it's exhausted?
It's, it's practical.
Well, I don't think it's going to get done in a couple of weeks anyway. So can we make it a priority?
I think that's the point as far as, but if we have the address, give us the address, we'll look at, you know, what the situation is.
I mean, sometimes there are situations that require more of a.
It's a hundred Barbara Street, very easy to read.
Just on the motion, it's a public hearing. I don't, I, I'm prepared, I've got my list of questions, whether it takes a short amount of time or all night, this is when it's advertised. So if people want to put motions on, and there's other item agendas, to me, the public hearing in large part was to discuss the budget, so I want to talk about it tonight. I have questions, I have concerns, I have, I'm sure we all, but I'm, you know, let's get into it. We have a public hearing. Normally, people would come up and speak. I think maybe they haven't in the past, but we were given this budget two weeks ago. I know there's, you know, year after year, we say this has more information in it than, you know, that's why we don't go through these long sessions as we once had. Case in point, look at the budget that you just raised, Madam Manager. So if there are mo, we say each time, and in my opinion, I, I went through most of this, and I like the fact that this, there are still outputs, and there's, there's data in this, still have questions and concerns. So I don't know what the desire of the body is, but I'm not interested in just, you know, rubber stamping this. I don't, I don't believe we ever do. We go through a discussion, people make comments. And if we want to delay it or have more time to talk about it, but I think it was posted for tonight, people watching want to hear it, and I want to, let's get into it.
Okay. Are you all set, Madam Manager? Before I go to the.
Yeah, again, I, I guess you did open the public hearing. I just, and there are several things on for public hearing, including capital plan. So whatever, however the council wants to proceed, you know, we're prepared to obviously answer any questions. We made a presentation last week on it. I don't know if anyone.
I think the question is, do we want to go line item by line item? Or do we just want to talk generally about it? So it doesn't matter to me.
And we, on the capital plan, if you want to take that separate, it may address some things that are budget related, but we could do it before or after. It doesn't really matter.
I'll make a motion that we take the capital budget separate. I mean, I'd like to go through this four hundred and sixty million dollar budget, ask my questions, make my statements, and then, you know, move on. Unless we want to go line item by line item, I'll leave that up to my colleagues, but.
So motion by Councilor Elliott, second?
Second.
By Councilor Mercier to go through the budget to start the process tonight and to separate the capital plan?
I think that we should, yes.
So we do a roll call then? Make sure?
I think it's just a voice vote, but.
Just voice vote? Does everyone want to start tonight? Yeah, all right, so, okay.
I think it's still in the public hearing. I don't know if there's anybody in opposition.
Okay, all right. So anybody else in favor? In favor? That portion is closed. Anybody in opposition? Opposition? Opposition, that portion is closed. So now we'll just start with the questions. Do you want to go first, Councilor Elliott?
I'm happy to go first. Sure. So thank you, thank you for the report. It does get more informational every year. I think that's helpful. I wanted to shift to page, if I could, four ninety-one. Mr. Baldwin, I don't know, I know you made opening statements before, Madam Manager or Mr. Baldwin, I don't know if we want to, if you have anything else to say.
I, you know, we did the opening and the presentation last week, so, and we can do that for the capital plan this week, but I assume the council has questions to jump in on this one.
Sure. So I'm on page forty-one, this is four ninety-one, excuse me, this is fixed cost, kind of just jumping ahead to these big ticket items that were mentioned in, in the summary. But some of them, debt service, I get, is kind of welcome news that we took a slight decrease, slight to the tune of almost two million dollars in FY twenty-one. Is that part of the debt schedule, Mr. Baldwin? That's how the debt was scheduled out, meaning some debt comes off the schedule, and then we add some depending upon the capital plan?
That's correct, and that is our general strategy for managing the debt service in each year. As we take on new debt from the capital plan and the capital plan, a separate item before the council tonight, as we, as those projects happen and we finance the expenditures, we try to layer on the debt in a way where what's coming off, we're layering on and trying to even out the debt service over a, over a period. The one exception to that is the high school debt service, which we can talk about that separately, but our, our plan commensurate with what the council suggested, when we approved the loan order, was to try to stagger that debt service as best we could by using the reimbursements to keep the cash flow going. So that is generally our strategy.
Okay. And when, in large part, refresh my memory, is it twenty twenty-four that the bulk of, or we're going to start seeing that debt come online for the first phase or second phase of the high school? I should have that marked.
Some is in this capital plan, some of the debt.
Okay.
Do you have this scheduled?
We, we are taking on some of that debt currently, but the majority of the debt starts to come online in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, and then again, twenty twenty-seven. In the forecast that we include for the general fund in the budget, we include that as a line item to show the bottom line expenditure forecast.
Okay, great. So can I just go down this list, because as we talk about, you know, the levy increase, and that is a concern, because we did learn the other week about, or to some degree, this American Rescue Plan money, the guidance is very clear, the guidance that I have seen, the three documents, and it's not the three hundred pages. But they made it clear that you cannot supplant, because I think one of the big issues or reasons to use that is to help property owners, the property tax owners. And it's very clear that we cannot use any of that for property taxes. We can use it for COVID-related expenses, we can use it for revenue losses as a result of, say, things like meals tax, hotel tax, some of the other, you know, we lost, you know, licenses, permits, the parking revenue, big, you know, big decline. So that's, it's unfortunate, but I think it's important to let people know that, you know, there is a levy increase just for some of the costs that we're talking here right now. You mentioned the charter school, and I'm not going to mention anymore, because it's an assessment to the city, direct to the taxpayers, right off our, right into the general fund that we have no control of. It's a four point seven million this year increase. So that's, it's not sustainable. We have filed resolutions, we've asked for home rule petitions, and the legislature, to me, there was an increase with the Student Opportunity Act, but as after COVID. Anyway, I'm rambling on here, we're still taking a big hit, and it's, it's a, it's a big challenge for communities like Lowell that have charter schools. It's education, it's public education, it should be funded accordingly. But in addition to that, just on the, the unemployment, that was good news, it was only a hundred and ninety-seven last year. We anticipate more unemployment costs because it's jumping back up to estimated of five hundred thousand. And, and why would that be?
We typically do budget enough for what we think could be a high year, and it is often that the actual expenditures come in lower than that. One reason recently has been the availability of the CARES Act funding to fund some unemployment costs that we're able to directly tie to COVID. So that has been, and that funding still is available into FY twenty twenty-two. So the budget is there, if it's not needed, it could be transferred by the council into other, other items.
Okay, okay, that makes, that makes sense. Down to pension, again, they're not huge, but it's significant increase, our pension assessment, that comes from the state, I'm not blaming anybody, but that's a continued increase that when we're looking to hold the levy down on an annual basis, these are the things that, you know, there's no frills, there's no loads of jobs that we're adding to the budget, there's not these huge salary increases, it's these areas, you know, pension, debt service, workers' comp. The next one would be Medicaid, Medicare tax. Could you explain the increase on that one, please? Goes from.
The Medicare tax is a percentage based on the number of employees, it's a point zero four or five percent that, that is paid by the payroll for all employees in the city. So as, as the number of active employees fluctuates, the cost goes up or down. And we've seen in the past few years, the budgeted amount has not been sufficient. So we're budgeting sufficient money there to cover the, the actual cost, so that we don't have to at the year end. The goal there is to prevent the need to do year end transfers, so that it's an expense we have to incur. And if we exceed the budget, we have to look to surpluses and other accounts to cover it at the year end.
And that tax goes to Medicare fund? It's not, it's not.
Goes to the federal government.
Right, federal government. I will turn the floor over, I know, I don't want to ask, I have some other questions, but just claims and judgment, how do we, how do we wrap our arms around this? I mean, it fluctuates from FY nineteen, it was eight forty-nine, then it went up to one point two, and we're estimating it to come down again. Is there sort of a pattern, Madam Solicitor, on, on these claims, these judgments? And why do they kind of hover around three quarters of a million dollars?
Sure. So the, the reason that you would see some flexibility is there is going to be, there's going to be flexibility, years where you're going to be having a higher amount, and then other years where there are decreases in some of these costs. Overall, I will say that for, for a city of our size, with the number of cases that we, that we have, and considering how much, what is the cost of litigation? If you have a case in, say, federal court, just the attorney's fees alone are roughly up to a million dollars, depending on how far a case is allowed to proceed. So we, we try to do our best to stay within that budgeted amount. We look at things like, like settlement, we look at things like dispositive motions right out of the gate. The city just, we were sued recently by NRT Bus Company. School Department, we handled those cases. A motion to dismiss was filed on all counts, and all but one count now remains, which, again, for a motion to dismiss, as the manager could, could also tell you, is not the, is not the easiest standard to meet. And, but we do all of these things, and hopefully, together, they make a big difference in being able to stay within a budget that, that I think is very, is very lean and reasonable.
Well, thank you. I appreciate the investments that are made in economic development. Clearly, that. Clearly, that's been a focus for quite some time, as well as, and we talked about it a little bit. We're going to hire a person that'll find, a grant writer for the fire department, considering the needs and the opportunities out there. You know, the administration continues to support our education, and we consistently exceed our net school spending by, by wide amounts. I think that's, speaks in itself. So there is an increase. I'm hoping that some of COVID money, and I'm going to be careful, not going to supplant the budget, but I do think there's opportunities to, whether it was loss of revenue, to, you know, to, again, the word's not supplant, but I, I, I feel that the creativity of this city and the administration, whether it's finances or anything else, that, that we can provide the tax relief that I feel property owners continue to experience. And on one last note, the recycling costs are significant. It's 1.9 million. These are all the illegal, or not illegal, but, you know, I guess it's illegal, but it's the fines that we're being levied against waste management, which, which is significant. And I don't know what to do about it. I don't know what the, what can we do about it? The more people, the more legal waste that goes into recycling, the more it costs us, the users. And, and I, I know there's those silver bullet, people have to stop throwing things that are not recyclable in the recycling bin, and, because it's just, every time, it costs us. You know, we're looking at trying to pick up yard waste more during the summer of, you know, I know I'm not going to steal Council Connoy's thunder, but I do, I do think it makes some sense. We've seen the complaints. Letting clippings sit for two weeks is a lot. But can you speak to the recycling, Madam Manager, and what we're going to do?
Yeah, this, this has been a constant frustration for the past three years that I've been here, and, and we've tried education. We've tried outreach. I think in, in discussing this with the Commissioner and with, you know, those in DPW, I think we have to seriously consider bringing in, hiring people for enforcement. And when I say that, I mean, you get a warning, and if you don't obey, we don't pick it up. And we need the cooperation of waste management on that. Do not pick it up. If they have a, a warning on their tag or on their address, you know, people have to, if they won't comply, then we can't pick up their, their waste. It's as simple as that. And, and, you know, some people may, once in a while, make a mistake, but we're not talking about, you know, gee, they, they put, you know, a Styrofoam cup in that didn't belong there. It's not that. These are people who are completely disregarding, they're using this barrel as either a second trash barrel, or they're just loading it up with sometimes construction debris from their, their jobs or work.
We see that. Air conditioners.
Air conditioners, you know, broken furniture, things that have no business being in the recycle bin. And I understand why they can't do it without charging us because it costs them a ton of money to sort this all out once it gets to their plant. But, you know, we've tried the carrot, we've tried sending out in multiple languages. We've tried to reach people in, in terms of mailing what you can do. We send them the, the list of what you can and cannot recycle. It doesn't seem to move the needle in, in some areas, and we do audits by neighborhoods. And so I think we're at a point where we can, based on the data, once waste management has enough people working to pick up both recycle, yard waste, and trash, but that's a discussion later on. But the, I, I, I think we, we need to look at those constant, you know, just violate, violations and, and take action. And the, seriously, I think the only message that will get through is if your barrel won't be picked up next time. Just, you know, we'll take your trash. We're not going to take the, the green barrel because you're not, you're not recycling. And I don't know any other way. We've, we've tried everything.
No, Madam Manager, this has been going on for a while. As you mentioned, a number of years now. We've done outreach. People have, you know, first chance, second chance. But the people that are recycling, we're, we're paying for it, and it's going on the tax rate because there's nowhere else to do it, and it's, and it's unfair, and it's a measure that we don't want to take. But unfortunately, our backs are against the wall, and we've got to, you know, we're trying to look for nickels and dimes.
We may have to spend some money to, to save, as you pointed out. It's 1.9 million dollars. That's, you know, and, and yet, we do know that there are areas that are not, you know, in, they're within the, the parameters that are acceptable. So it can be done. It's not that this is an impossible thing to do. So we, we will continue to try education, but I think at some point, we need to just stop picking it up.
Right, okay. I, I will, I'm sure we'll get into this. I don't want to, I don't want to just take the whole floor here, but I, I appreciate the work and effort into the budget. I'm sure we're going to have more discussions, and as Council Mercy, I appreciate the fact that we had money at the end of the year, because sometimes I've sat here and we're in a negative position, and that's not good. In spite of the revenue loss, we held the line and were able to take money. We replenished the rainy day fund that we, that we, that we borrowed from because it was a rainy day, it was raining last year. And that provides us the financial stability that we need. We can meet our obligations, and when we go to bond money for some capital projects, you know, the high school and our roads and, and so many that are listed in here, when we get a better bond rating, we save literally hundreds of thousands of dollars. So it's, you know, it's not robbing Peter to pay Paul. It's putting money aside to, to save a lot of money. So, you know, I feel it's a fair budget. It's, it does it, address issues that we've talked about of equity and inclusion. It looks at public safety, continues to fund, fund public safety, our police and our fire, our education, and economic development. To those, to me, those are significant. They're the pillar of this, pillars of the community, and will continue to be. We're not out, you know, we're not out of the water yet. We still have a long way to go. I think the discussions and deliberations that we have with the American Rescue money, we can meet some of these obligations and continue to be financially sound. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the floor. I know that was kind of long, but it's the budget process we're going to be...
Thank you. Councilor Smaras has his hand up next, and then...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Madam Manager, again, for this budget. I think tonight, I mean, this, this meeting is open to the public, and some people are concerned that many people are not here. I can say, over the years, I've seen enough budgets. And there was a time when many people would come to go through the budget, and we'd go through it line by line. But there were much smaller budgets and with very, just a few things that might be changed or could be changed. I think the public has shown a trust in what we're doing or what this administration is doing. I think some of the questions that are being raised tonight are those type of questions that the public might be concerned about or not really understand clearly. So I only have a couple of questions in that area. With Councilor Elliot, you were talking, Mr. Baldwin, about the, basically, the levy increase of 3.5% for the high school. And I just, if you could explain it in, in different terms, that's part of the debt service you talked about. But can you explain really what it means? In other words, it looks like the 3.5% tax increase along with the 2.5%, you know, that we're, we're showing for this year. But can you just explain the process of what it means and how we're funding this high school? Again, so people can understand that what you're also doing is trying to help defer some of the costs so it's not just put on everybody all at once.
Sure.
Just give a, you know, so people have an understanding.
So, so the city annually is subject to the limitations of Prop. 2.5 as it relates to taxes. And just one quick note about that, the city, over the course of a number of years, if you don't tax up to the 2.5% limitation allowed for under the law, you build up what's called excess levy capacity. And the city has about $20 million approximately of excess levy capacity. And so that's why, when you hear a number of, a tax increase of over 2.5%, that is how the city is allowed to do that. As, as it relates specifically to the high school and the debt service associated with it, are, as we mentioned a little earlier, the financing strategy is to finance the cash flow of the high school project throughout the phases. And this is an advantage to the city because we don't have to take on the full brunt of the debt service all at once, as, as may be the case in some other communities. And so as we fund each phase of the project, and to date, we've spent about $28 million on the project. We've permanently financed a portion of that because all of the expenditures are funded in portion by bonds, but also by grants from the MSBA on a pay-as-you-go basis. That's how the, the MSBA funds projects under the newer program. So to date, we've received $17.1 million in MSBA grants. Our debt service that we are currently carrying, associated with the high school, is approximately $1.1 million. So that amount is paid by the operating budget each year for the next 30 years. As we bring on more debt service, it will get layered on top in the manner as I, I mentioned previously. So about $1.1 million is part of the tax percentage for this year. And, and as we move forward, we will layer on new debt. But you have to remember that debt that has been on the books for a long time starts to fully retire. So for the schools that were built in the 1990s, a, a lot of that debt is starting to come off the book. So our, our strategy is to try to maintain a level so as not to unduly impact the burden on taxes.
Thank you. That's the point I wanted you to reach. I mean, people, you know, are we just constantly building on the debt? Or, you know, some of the debt paid off, and what are we talking about? That's a good example of where we're at. Thank you. Thank you for that. The other issue concern I have, first of all, I'm very pleased that net school spending has been met by this city, by this administration. It's, if you look at many of the other gateway cities, that's not what is happening across the state. My concern is charter schools. The money, amount that you put this year is 4.7 million dollars, correct? 7, 4,750,000, I believe. The, this cost, or the cost of charter schools, I mean, seems to be like almost an, an ending gain. In other words, are we ever going to catch up? I don't think so. And when you talk about charter schools, these aren't problems that towns have. There are very few charter schools in the small towns throughout the Commonwealth. It's the gateway cities that have the charter schools. And charter schools offer programs for, for people, and that's why they send their children there. I think many charter schools have full-day programs, and they become something that parents like and attracts a certain group of people. But my concern is that charter schools, if they cannot be continued to be supported this way. In other words, because when you, the more you support the charter schools, the more money you're taking out of public education in the city. And that's not a formula that makes any sense to me. Never has, never will. And the one thing about charter schools, they're state-mended mandated programs. And my feeling is if the state's going to mandate a program, they should support it properly. So the question to you, Madam Manager, is you're, I know, in constant conversation because of many other things, with mayors and city managers of all the gateway cities, of literally everybody. Is there a possibility, or could you come back with some information of, can we as gateway cities form some type of group? And, and I know it's been done, there's been attempts over the years, but I think it's time has come because, when you're talking over $4 million increases, these are substantial increases. And this prevents a lot of, first of all, it can prevent us from meeting that, that school spending or some issues of doing more things for the schools that you've been doing. Is, is there a possibility of getting groups together? I mean, are this, are we just, you know...
Council, I think, you know, I, I think it's always possible. There's been discussion for, for several years running, especially around the gateway cities, especially as we have seen the expansion of charter schools, as you point out. You know, there's a, a desire of, of families sometimes to have their children in the charter school and have that choice, but we see the direct financial impact to the communities who honestly can least afford that increased assessment on the cherry sheet. You know, this, again, the Student Opportunity Act was an effort to move toward 100%, you know, funding of the charter school reimbursement. There's a, there is an advocacy for that. So I never say never. I think the advocacy has to continue. And, and I do know, in talking to a couple of my counterparts in the cities, you know, they're, they're facing the same thing. They're facing the same. Whenever you have new grades opening, that's a huge uptick in your assessment.
Yeah. I mean, but the, the thing is, and you, you pointed out, and you show clearly, there are some cities not meeting their net school spending, and they're also having the difficulty of increased charter school spending. So that just puts them into an impossible situation to be, be able to offer our children, all children, all children. I mean, the one thing, charter school students are our students, too.
Yes.
Okay, there's no question. I mean, we have to make that very clear. People have to know that we, we have to support all students. But if you have a process that creates problems for one aspect, it doesn't make sense. And I, I think this is something that has to be corrected. So maybe at some point, you could, instead of making a motion, you can provide us with some information if there's a, a, a hope or a desire, so to say, to be able to do this, okay?
I'll, I'll second that motion if that's in a form of a motion.
Okay.
And I'd like, if there's no objection, Councilor Smaras, if we can task the manage, the mayor with reaching out to those communities that are experiencing the same thing. Because I, I can remember having this conversation, and the conversation is we've got to get other communities and form a coalition because we're not the only ones, and, and it's significant around the state. So if I can make that friendly, friendly amendment that the mayor reach out to those communities that are experiencing the, you know, that have charter schools and see multimillion-dollar increases.
No, I agree. And as I stated before, this is not an attack on charter schools. This is an attack on the funding process, and we're looking for equity for everybody. That's... There are other aspects, but the thing is, what I want to bring up on the budget, which I was very pleased to see, I trust, I trust what the administration is doing, you know, with the budget process. And it's, it's been clear because of the ratings that we get, that, you know, that we're, this is being handled properly. But on one of your examples here of, of the budget, I'd like to read this point where you state, "We are confident that we will be able to build back better. Lowell's history is marked by resiliency, whether through the immigration story of our ancestors or throughout Lowell's many revitalizations. Each time that this city has been knocked down, it has found a way to regain its footing and reinvent itself. This time will be no different. We remain circumspect, circumspect regarding the lingering impacts of the pandemic, but must do the same, but at the same time, we must be bullish in our pursuit of opportunities to transform the way we do business. I am proud to present a funding plan that ends, that to that end, which supports a continued emphasis on the key focuses of my administration." And this is what I like. Economic development, this council has always been supportive of that. Strong finance, you've put us into that situation with your team. Public safety, every city council here has talked at one point or another, supporting our police and our fire with the proper number of people to be able to do their job. And that's indicated in your budget. And now equity and inclusion in education. I mean, this is a direction that, I look at this budget, yes, there's a lot of numbers. Yes, there's a large amount of money here. But what I see in this budget is that every office has been vetted out as to how they're spending their money. They've been given opportunity to speak with the CFO and yourself on what they're doing and what they, what they need to run their department, and that's worked out. And at the same time, what you're talking about is, and which I like and appreciate, is not that we're going to, we have more money, we can continue doing what we're doing. We have money, but now we're talking about reinventing while looking at where we are today and what changes we have to make tomorrow to be able to survive. What changes we have to make tomorrow to make Lowell a better city. So I appreciate this. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Rock?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just, first off, just a general question to the manager or to our CFO. Was the reasoning for the request... Was the reasoning for the request to level fund from the department heads, you know, in this city, was it based on the federal money that we expect to have coming in? Was it based on just extremely low, you know, revenue coming in, such as parking and so forth? You know, I just, what was, I guess, the main reason for the level funding aspect of this year's budget?
Thank you, Counselor. The rationale is similar to the way that we budget, we approach the budget in each year. We take a look at the forecast and we project out our local receipts estimates, the, you know, what we're hearing out of the State House for the budget for the upcoming fiscal year from the state because the city's budget is so reliant on Chapter Seventy and unrestricted aid from the state. And once we bring all of that into our budget model, we take a look at our known fixed costs increases, which we know early in the year. And each year that I've done this, the result of that calculation is the same, that there is not much left over for discretionary spending. So the message to the departments is never all that much different. That is, you know, there are contractual services that increase by contract and you must absorb those within your budget, but that any other increases must be, must be level funded. And this, this year was especially, that message was, had to be underscored because of the loss of local receipts that we were anticipating. As we were preparing the budget, you know, this was back in January, February, the coronavirus pandemic was still very much a part of our planning process. And so those were all part of the messaging because the budget process is really an annual process. And so we start to solicit those requests in January and that, you know, that goes into what we expect from departments.
And I think to that point, what we did see, you know, again, from the state, there was a substantial increase for the school department side under the Student Opportunity Act and we're happy about that. But there was not that kind of increase to, to the unrestricted aid to local government or, you know, local aid. It was pretty modest as far as.
Less than a million dollars.
Yeah. And so, you know, though, when you're looking at the escalating costs, whether it's charter school, healthcare, pension, all of those that are going up in the multiples of millions of dollars and wanting to preserve every job, you know, it's, again, it's always a balancing act, but we didn't want to, you know, we knew there would be an increase based on the fixed costs going up and somewhat uptick on the debt service, but we didn't want to have to look at any cuts to personnel if we could avoid it, so.
So there's no plan by the city to hire a hundred new positions?
No. We have, we actually have three in the budget. One of them, we feel very confident, the grant writer will pay for itself. We're pretty confident about that. And we also are pretty confident that a cybersecurity expert in the long run could very well pay for itself to have that in place. And we also believe the diversity and inclusion officer is very important and is, you know, part of, you know, the goals of the city. But that's it for new positions.
Right. So in seeing that, so in the personnel section of the budget, it does have twelve vacant police officers and fourteen vacant fire fighters. The money is there for those positions. So do you expect to have those twelve police officers and those fourteen firefighters working this fiscal year?
So we have eleven in the academy right now for the police academy and I believe they will be graduating in October. And in terms of the firefighters, I know we have, we expect to have at least two rounds going into the academy. I think the chief was able to secure places. I think the first academy for the fire that was even open was maybe August. But I think what last he told me was, I think there were eight or nine positions that he has secured for the academy. So it's not a question of not funding because the funding is there. It's a question of getting, you know, the training and getting the spots, especially for fire, in the academy. I know with police, we, you know, the academy started, we did add another one. So we are trying to keep up with that because we also look down the road and say, who's eligible to retire? And so, you know, you constantly are trying to fill to keep those numbers at full force.
And there was a conversation earlier about asphalt and the price skyrocketing and not being able to do certain projects. I know obviously that the price of lumber and steel has skyrocketed as well over the past, you know, just a few months. So when you're projecting the costs for supplies at the new high school project, is there a factor of five percent, ten percent increase in costs when doing the budget? And then you have a situation like this where, you know, the costs are just, you know, exploding. You know, was the supply bought beforehand? Is there a dealer in place that we have? Or is it a, like most projects go, you know, you buy as you need?
So with the high school, obviously our consultants are looking at every single aspect of that. We're in phase one right now and I think, you know, obviously the steel is here and so, you know, that's up. We're waiting for their advice on phases two, three, and four. Right now, you know, it probably wouldn't make any sense to go out and buy steel today for phases that aren't going to happen for eighteen months, three years, four years, so. But they will be coming back to us with all of the advice on those components.
Okay. And just lastly, you know, we talked, in terms of the recycling and how it's just basically bleeding money, someone should save the city money it's actually costing us, you know, it goes up every single year. And the idea of hiring inspectors, you know, going forward, is that same precedent being thought about with our building inspectors, you know, with our health inspectors, you know, to try, they had a very difficult year with the pandemic and not being able to get out and have fallen behind. Is there any thought on that as well? You know, and it seems like I'm adding to the budget, right? And I'm not so attracted to it, but there are quality of life issues that people are really concerned about, you know, all we hear about is yard waste and why it's not picked up. And I know fines are coming to waste management and to try to deal with that situation, but you know, obviously steps have to be taken to fix the recycling problem, you know. And I know that we're very similar position as far as catching up on inspections, whether it be health-wise or building-wise.
We, in a separate conversation, I expect we're going to be coming back to the council regarding inspections and inspectors. That proves to be a very difficult situation. We've lost a few inspectors to other communities. We were already down and we continue to lose because their, other communities are paying more. We want to have a conversation and a proposal with the council about that. It's, you know, we are required to do inspections and, and you're correct, in pandemic, you know, things have fallen behind. But we are understaffed at the present time and we've been trying desperately to hire more inspectors and unfortunately get outbid by a community not too far away on either side of us. So, but we, that will be something that we're going to come back to the council and talk about.
You know, I think when you hear level front of budget, when you talk about, you know, that the positions for the fire and the positions for the police and for the inspectors are all there, it's just a matter of, you know, doing the work, going out and getting those, you know, minimum that come to work with the city. I think it shows that, you know, even when you do go above the two point five percent, you know, they are based upon the quality of life issues that, you know, make people that, you know, live, work, or, you know, raise a family here, their lives a little bit easier, right? So I think the budget was all done and I'm glad that we're here tonight discussing it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor, drink water?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this issue has been, it's come up tonight a couple of times and appropriately so because it's one of the main issues when you, that you take away when you read the budget and it's the issue of charter schools. Wanted to point out a couple of things and there was a lot of information, narrative information included in the budget that I think was really important, not only when it comes to this year, but when it comes to future years in terms of the assessment on charter schools. I know we had a overall, a five million dollar increase in the charter school assessment that's before the reimbursement from the state. That number I know was heavily because we were adding seats. It's not a fixed number. A number of the charter schools are adding seats. I think, I know the last number of years, the collegiate charter school has been bringing on a grade each year. That's going to continue, I believe, into next year. I think next year may be the final year that they have a grade coming on. Someone please correct me if that's not correct. But just want to point out that, you know, this is, when we have charter schools continuing to add seats and especially add grades, this is just going to be a year-over-year issue that we have to continue to deal with. So I, it does have to somehow be addressed at the state level. The Student Opportunity Act, I know, was a very big net benefit for the city in terms of our Chapter Seventy allocation. And not only, you know, benefits the entire state because of the increased Chapter Seventy funding, but particularly for communities like Lowell, and you can read here in the budget, that we benefit more than many other communities because of the way that the Student Opportunity Act changed the low income increment and also the way that the, it's calculated. So we received a significant bump from the way the Student Opportunity Act changed the low income increment. We ended up adding a number of pupils who are considered low income under the formula, which resulted in a large increase. So without that legislation, I know we would be in a much more desperate situation. Sorry, it was a bit of a disturbance outside. So I just, I just wanted to point out that, you know, with regard to the Student Opportunity Act, certainly very, very thankful that it increased the charter school assessment because we would be in a really, really difficult way if we were taking on the increased charter assessment without the increased reimbursement. So just wanted to point that out and echo the calls that have come earlier tonight for this to be addressed at the state level because it just seems to be completely unsustainable. Overall, I feel this is a, it's a good budget. I believe it's fair. I know that the, both the tax increase and the use of the stabilization fund has been similar to last year. I think it's wise and I did want to, you know, point out that I think in terms of trying to keep the levy down and the impact on the tax rate down, you know, I support the use of the stabilization fund to be able to do that. I know recently we used our use of free cash to pay back, essentially pay back last year's use of the stabilization fund, which I think ended up being, you know, a wise, wise use of that fund. We were able to pay it back to make sure that we can, you know, keep our bond rating in check. And, you know, I think it's an important way that we have been able to, you know, maintain the, you know, a fair levy increase from year to year. We are limited. I think it's, this is a very good budget because during tough times, we've been able to maintain levels of service and maintain positions during these difficult times. But I think the situation we're in, it allows us to maintain service, but not make the additional investments that I think many of us would like to see. We have to keep the tax rate fair. We have to keep our stabilization fund, you know, well-balanced. And I think, you know, oftentimes we're held back by making those additional sorts of investments that I think we'd all like to see. So I really hope that with the discussion that we will be having on the American Rescue Plan funds, that we will be able to not only address a lot of the issues that have been brought on by the pandemic, address a lot of the public health challenges, but also make some of these investments that we maybe have not been able to make just within the general operating budget because we're on, it's such a tight and lean budget every year. So, you know, very little room for, you know, for supplemental spending, you know, throughout the year. And I'm hoping that the American Rescue Plan can help us make some of those ongoing investments. But I do think this is, you know, it's a good budget. It's a fair budget. And, you know, just to highlight a couple of things, I think the inclusion of the position of the Equity Inclusion Officers is very important. Want to include an important statement that we are making sure that we're carrying out the work that we committed to taking on. And, you know, the investments in public safety and in the fire department specifically will hopefully be a first step to, you know, answer the public's call to make sure that we are, you know, increasing staffing and making sure we're adequately staffed for public safety. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Madam Manager, to you and the team for your work on this budget.
Thank you. Counselor Noon, then Counselor Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have, like most of you, a total confident in this administration and applaud the CFO and the manager for having a balanced budget that meet and exceed the school's spending and fully fund the public safeties as well as address the firehouse closing, the brownout that we've been, you know, raised in the last couple of months. And to do that, also create a grant writers that, as some of my colleagues indicated, that will pay off itself. They go into write grant and they're going to try and to get some of the equipment that need to, and, you know, that they needed and as well as maybe additional firefighters, as well as, you know, the, not only that this budget is doing, but also hiring the, address the issue of equities and inclusion by hiring some officers to work on that and waiting for the report from the HR audit. I also feel that we should be able to use the federal fund, the American Rescues Fund to lessen the property taxes on, property tax increase on resident as well as at the same time address the issues of the depletion of the enterprise fund, parking because, due to COVID, as well as what ensued that, you know, again, the revenue that we should otherwise get it because of the COVID. So I, so that said, I was wondering if I can ask questions to the CFO, Connor. Can you talk about the indirect way that we can use these American Rescues Fund or dollar money to lessen the property tax increase on the resident?
Sure. Thank you for the question, Counselor. One of the strategies that we're investigating so as to use American Rescue Plan money in a way that is consistent with the guidance and matches the legislative intent of the funds is to match our strategy that was discussed before relative to the use of free cash to replace stabilization. So by that, I mean, in the budget, as has been pointed out, the tax increase has been lessened by the use of the stabilization fund. So one way that is an allowable use of the American Rescue Plan is to use the fund to replace lost revenue. For revenue that was lost that we're able to calculate through a prescribed formula in the legislation, we'll be able to generate revenue that we can count towards the general fund. When we close that year, when it's credited and you get a few different shots at this, you get four, there's a calculation period, there's four successive ones, each one you're able to credit a lost revenue amount. When that year closes, it will close to the undesignated fund balance and become part of free cash. That free cash is available for appropriation for any legal purpose. And with that, we can replace what may have been used from the stabilization. So we will continue to use the stabilization fund to mitigate the tax increase and then pay it back with this lost revenue from the American Rescue Plan. And that is how we will use the funds to ease the burden on the tax rate. But we can't make a direct contribution from one to the other. There is also a prohibition from using the ARP funds as a direct transfer into like a pension fund or a stabilization fund. So there are certain rules and restrictions. There's an informational item on this evening's agenda where we can talk more about this and certainly at a subcommittee level, but that is our general strategy. We will pursue the lost revenue component of the legislation to continue to pay back stabilization, which we use to help ease the burden on taxpayers.
You talk about the guideline in terms of how to spend this money, the federal fund that soon to come, how, what we can use it on. So is the enterprise fund, as I indicated, can we use, can we directly use that because of that, those are the revenue loss? Is that correct?
That is correct and the enterprise funds are absolutely going to be a target for lost revenue, parking being our first priority in this payback scenario. So we receive the, we will receive the funds in we will receive the funds in two tranches. One, immediately, we've submitted an application, so as soon as the funds are received, we can put them to use and start to plan. The second will be received one year later. The enterprise funds, water, sewer, and parking are all eligible categories for revenue loss replacement. The parking fund, the parking enterprise, has seen a significant drop in revenue due to the pandemic. It should be no surprise to the City Council that the on-street revenue, the revenue from the parking garages, has seen a significant hit. So we have that as our top priority for revenue replacement, so that we can credit some of this back within fiscal year 2021, because the other thing is, we have to take on the debt service for the Hamilton Canal Garage immediately. So we have permanently financed all of that $35 million loan order. And so the revenue replacement in the parking fund is an immediate priority for the administration.
So the property tax increase that we spoke of on this budget, there are possibility, high possibility, that can be lessened by the indirect use of those money, the federal money. Is that correct?
That is correct, and we will continue to pursue that as part of our financing strategy in the next few years as well.
That's, that's what we want as a council, here, everyone here, and at the same time, provide services to our community, either be public safety, education, and public work. So I thank you for the budget. Thank you.
Counselor Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, a couple of weeks ago, I mentioned that, and the other counselors too, mentioned that it's an excellent budget. It's, it's a budget that had to be put together in very difficult times. So I congratulate you, Madam Manager, and your team for putting this budget together. And there's just a few things I wanted to mention. You talked about the academy, the police academy. We have 11 there. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, I believe there's currently 11 in that class.
Do you know of that, what, how that number compares with previous years?
It's, I think the past couple of years, there may have been at 1.8. This is probably the highest number we've had in the past couple of years.
Okay. Okay. I also want to compliment you, excuse me, we've talked about it here tonight and in the past, the grant to fix the schools, which I believe was around $14 million for the MSBA. And it's something that you'll be applying for each, each year. And that was to help with the badly needed repairs on the roofs and heating systems, doors and windows and so forth. So again, this is something that hasn't been done in a number of years. So I'm glad that someone was able to, you and your team were able to identify here as a source that can certainly help out the schools. In the difficult times, this is where people get very creative. Now, that right there, I think, is extremely important, you reach out to the state to help out. Then, when you go and you start talking about public safety, which I think is so very important, you hire a grant writer for the fire department, and I think that is so important, because that, that individual is going to pay for their job salary over and over and over. And I think that's extremely important, you're thinking outside the box, you and your team, which is going to end up materializing in some real, real help for the, for the fire department. So again, I congratulate you on that, that grant writer. I think it's so, so very important. This budget, as we've pointed out, was extremely tight, but yet, we were able to, we were able to make sure that our fire department, police department, our services, and the schools are fully funded, and even more. So again, I applaud you for that. The, I do want to say, just for a moment, when Counselor Mercy was talking about, you know, half a trillion-dollar, billion-dollar budget, which is extreme, which is incredible. But I think that, when I look back at, I was on the school committee for a number of years, and we did budgets, and we started off on a Saturday morning, and we went basically a page by page. So I think it might be something that we look at down, you know, in the future as a possibility, so that we can get a better view perhaps in it. Also, I want to say that because of the, because of the budget, and because of the way the money is spent, and that how we're very careful, we, we had that excellent rating from the Standards and Poor's, saying that, you know, you, we are doing the right thing here in Lowell, and that we're watching our money. And I think that's very important. And the last point I want to make, and we've talked about it numerous times on the floor, and that is the recycling cost. Now, I know I brought it up before, and, you know, everybody says the same thing, is that we have to do something about it. And you have stepped up and said, we need to perhaps hire some individuals to take a look and make sure that, you know, the illegal dumping has to stop, and that fines will take place. I absolutely agree with you. But what I brought up before, I think is important, because I've seen it work before in other places. And that is, I think we try to recycle as much as we possibly can, which is good. But the problem is, we're not getting it right. And I think that if we can identify certain recyclables, that, you know, let's start off with three or four, and let's get it right. And the other thing that, if I recall, when this recycling program first started off, there were containers, that I believe there were rectangular containers, and that everyone saw what was being put in those containers. There's no hiding. And I've gone in a number of towns and cities, and they still have that. And I said to somebody, I'm surprised you don't have the big buckets, I mean, the big barrels. And the first thing the person said was, well, the problem, we had them before, but people were dumping everything under the sun in them, like refrigerator, not refrigerators, but air conditioners, and toasters, and whatever. So I think it might be something to, to sit down and discuss that, because I really believe that if we limit the number of items and get it right, and we also take a look at the containers, I think it's going to save the city a lot of money in the long run. So, anyway, I will finish it up by saying, congratulations, Madam Manager, to you and your team, because I think you've done an excellent job in some such very difficult times with a budget that I do believe is, is extremely good for the city of Lowell. So, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for having me go last, because my colleagues have made some really good complimentary comments, and as well as challenging questions. So going last gave me a lot of insights, and going to take it a different direction a little bit. You know, first of all, Madam Manager, you and CFO and Allison have done a fantastic job with the budget. And you really cover all the angles, all the bases, what to run a city well, all the departments well. But one thing that I want to commend your team on, most importantly, if we were to have a theme, what was the most challenging events that happened this past year? You know, we always have public safety issues, education issues, infrastructure issues. But the one thing that really challenged the city leaders, the residents, and all of us, was the idea of diversity and equity and inclusion. And I want to thank you so much for working on that, and having a DEI officer for the next fiscal year. You're really focused on that. You really listen to the community and all of us, making sure that happens. So I want to compliment your team on that. I also have a question on something I learned from the last meeting. And the last meeting, I learned that the police precinct in the lower Highlands that is renting from the Boys and Girls Club, I believe, and they are going to move to the Pine Street Station. So that is a cost savings to the city. And I'm not quite sure where to find this budget. And because they're still there, I don't know if the savings have been realized. My question is, I always appreciate community policing, and I really appreciate that the precinct was there, really promote community relationships, and most importantly, safety to that area. That area is very heavily populated, different demographics, socioeconomic. And that's really is our challenge in the entire city of Lowell, is the lower Highlands in terms of crimes and safety for the public. If the saving was to realize when the police department is moving to Pine Street, how is that money being used to maintain the same level of public safety in that area?
Thank you, Counselor. Based on conversations with, with the chief, they fully intend to be as present there in the lower Highlands as they were when the precinct was there. And that would include, you know, some of the partnerships that have been developed with the Boys and Girls Club and other type of community policing efforts. They also are intent on starting a PAL program, which is with the young people of the city, especially in the lower Highlands area. And so, you know, though the precinct physically may be a little further up the street, their presence, there's no plan whatsoever to decrease their presence in the lower Highlands, and their participation. And as I said, I think the PAL program will be a great benefit in working with the community, and especially the young people of the community.
Thank you so much. And again, it's news to me, and it is, it is a big concern to the residents in the lower Highlands. Maybe I could put in a motion for you and the chief to make a presentation to how the activities will maintain. And even if the precinct's not physically there, to how that safety and community policing will be amplified going forward.
And let me just point out, too, Counselor, I don't know that we talked about it the last time, but the reason for the move is because the Boys and Girls Club is doing an expansion. They're doing construction. So the precinct was no longer going to be available to us. I think they had initially thought that we would have had to be out by last December, I think. But because of COVID and delays of certain projects, that we were able to stay over until we can have, have the space ready for the Pine Street. So that was the impetus. It wasn't that the police department wanted to leave, but that, you know, unfortunately, that space was no longer going to be available because of the plans that the Boys and Girls Club had. So, but we will be happy to make a presentation as far as what the plans are for the neighborhood going forward.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Did you get all your questions answered in the beginning? All right. I don't have much to say. A lot of questions have been asked and answered from here. The only suggestion I would make is, I'd just like to, we talk about the garbage, recycling, how much money we're paying on that. I wonder if there's just a way to look at the cars that are registered in New Hampshire for the money we're losing on excise tax. So that may be something to look at. All right. So I'm done with questions. Any other follow-up questions? So, Counselor Elliott?
Well, are we going line item by line item? Was that the wish of the body?
Well, I think we're just doing a question-answer.
No, that, Mr. Mayor, I think everybody asked the questions that they needed to. The impression that I got was, if you had a question, to call Connor, and then I thought that would be the end of it. And I thought it should be more than that. And it really was this time. People took their time to ask questions, which I wanted to hear what other people thought. So I move that we support this fiscal, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. I mean, we can support that. I have some other questions.
Okay. Counselor Elliott?
Well, no, she can make, the motion's on the floor. I'll second it, that we proceed with it, but.
That we support the fiscal year 22 budget.
Okay. Motion by Counselor Mercy. Second by Counselor Elliott.
Mr. Mayor, on the motion?
Yep.
I know that there's items on the agenda, Madam Manager, relative to cybersecurity, and I just wanted to touch on this a little bit. And I, Maron must have known what was, what the future is, because I think this is a serious issue of concern, especially in light of the significant breach that took place yesterday, that's hitting national and international companies, and, you know, the UK. And there is a cybersecurity position that is up for a vote tonight. And I did look at the budget, so it is a priority. I just thought we should let people at home know that we're staying ahead of this, and we're not going to be, fingers crossed, that we're not going to be, you know, caught with, with these hackers, because it's alive, and it's, and we've been lucky, and we've been cautious. So I thought that was important to mention, that we're making sure there won't be any compromise of the sensitive information that we have here. And can I go to our favorite subject on page 379, transportation? Is there any progress yet, Madam Manager, on, I'm sure there isn't yet, on hiring a transportation engineer? But if we look at the requests from businesses and residents, certainly the number of course in FY21 have hit a peak. And I guess after that, is that when Natasha Vance left the next fiscal year? No, there was a, we have to try to deal with this. Is there any update, Madam Manager, on how we can do this?
We've had many discussions. Unfortunately, we still haven't had qualified applicants apply yet. And so...
I thought you had a good idea, reaching out to schools, perhaps?
Correct. And that's in the process. Even UMass Lowell has a, a traffic engineer subset of the civil engineering. So we are going to actively try and reach out to the alumni and to graduates, and to see if we can make some progress in that way. But as opposed to, you know, the traditional posting and getting applicants, we have had applicants, but they haven't been qualified. And so, and we've also taken a close look at the requirements, and whether there can be any tweaking along that line. So we are working hard on this. This is really, you know, a very important aspect for, for us. And we're also looking at the types of requests that are pending, as well as, just in general, what types of requests that the city and the community asks for on a regular basis, and to see how, how those, you know, is there a different level of qualification that could respond to that. So we're trying to approach it maybe from a different angle.
Good. That's good. That's good to know. I think that's, that's something that we, you know, we've always talked about, working with the university and taking advantage of resources. Hopefully, hopefully, we can get somebody. Can I go to the election, the election section? We're moving into, we know that we've been putting a Band-Aid on the election machines. I don't see that in the capital plan. Was it in a prior capital plan that we're looking at getting new machines?
I believe it was previously funded, at least in part. Not this year, but I thought it was last year.
And I know we're moving into a new system, and these, these machines are how old, Mr. McCollum? Are they 25, 30? 25 years old, anyway?
I think they were here when I was on the council, that we bought them. We won't say how.
We won't say that number. So, so moving forward, are we in the process of, look, I think... I think voting and counting the votes, it's becoming more complicated, and we need to make sure that we have the equipment.
The loan order appropriation to fund the equipment purchase was previously authorized. So the authorization stands until the procurement is made.
So can we get them? I mean, that's almost the first question that you ask these days. Are these available? And how long are they going to take? With almost any equipment, vehicles, you name it, there's such a backlog of.
We can get back to you. Anything having to do with computer chips or anything like that is just backordered for months and months. But we'll, we will get back to you, Counselor, on where we stand on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, is that?
I did just want to go to the page 101 and talk about the levy just a little bit So Connor, on Mr. Walden, I'm on page 101. I do see in FY '22, there's a 1.8 increase, and that is what is a concern to me, because it's not present, not present in the five-year fiscal year forecast out through 2027. Why this year are we looking at that additional 1.5%? And as, as we've talked about earlier, is, how can, how can we reduce that? Is there a way for us to reduce that? There's not, there's not a whole lot outside of those fixed costs that we started with at the beginning. Is there opportunity not to supplant, but to look at some of the expenses in the general fund and use COVID money to offset that?
I think there is a lot of opportunity in the out years. What you're referring to in the budget is the five-year forecast. So that it is presented here in the budget for this very discussion. The second page of the two pages that make up the forecast projects the levy based on a number of assumptions that are detailed out. We had a pretty in-depth finance subcommittee meeting relative to the forecast and, and some of the changes we have made with COVID-19 in mind. To speak to your question directly, each year, we go into all of the revenues and all of the expenditures to see if there are opportunities to scale back either the expenditures, or if there are either one-time revenues that we may be able to add. And so each year is its own. And we, we spoke about in the presentation of the budget, how in this current fiscal year, 2022, we started the year with approximately a 15, 15.8 million dollar gap. And that was what we had to close to present a balanced budget to the council. So it's presented here with an escalation on each one of the expenditures as if nothing else were to happen. Obviously, things can change in the five-year window. There could be additional state aid. There could be a reduction in fixed costs. There could be savings, opportunities implemented by the administration, all of which could impact that projected levy increase. And it is our strategy each year to minimize that increase to the fullest extent possible. And that is what we do during the budget process. We present it here so, you know, so that the public has awareness as to some of the challenges on the horizon. And we want to be transparent about that. But each year, we look at the budget as a new year and start from scratch and try to get to zero on the bottom line.
And as we did last year, that was made by the administration. And it was when we closed year and came back, there was, I think we took 300,000 of funding and we reduced the levy impact, i.e. the impact on taxpayers. So I appreciate that commitment. I agree. Let's be transparent. And the second part to fold in is that we're going to continue to look to minimize the impact of that levy, which is, i.e. the taxpayers. And I, you know, there's, and again, to sound like a broken record, there's funding coming into the city. Unfortunately, we can't do anything about the levy, but there are other ways, I think, that we can, can be creative. So I think that's it. I think that's all I wanted to talk about. So thank you.
Thank you. So motions on the floor to adopt the FY 2022 city of Lowell budget in the amount of 414,618,254. Roll call.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercia?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Nine years.
Next, we have a, next, we have vote to endorse the five-year capital plan. Open up the hearing. Anyone in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion is closed. Open up to anyone in opposition? 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 That portion is closed. Need a motion to adopt? Or any questions? Motion to adopt?
Make a motion.
Do you have a question? Yeah.
I do have a question.
Okay. Motion to adopt by Counsel Drinkwater. Second by Counsel Rourke. Counsel Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to speak in support of the plan. I think it's a good plan. And as we were going through the discussion earlier, I did just want to point a couple of things out. One is that I know last year was very difficult. This year does increase the overall amount of capital spending that the city will take on, which I think is a positive thing. There's certainly a lot of needs out there. And in particular, one thing that stood out, certainly something we hear a lot about, is citywide paving and the sidewalk improvement program. It roughly doubled the city's appropriation through the capital budget to paving and sidewalks. I know there's 3 million in here. And I know we'll get additional Chapter 90 money as well. But 3 million dollars here compared to, I think, just about one and a half, if I recall, from last year. So significant investment. I know, you know, streets and sidewalks is something we hear a lot about. So I just, you know, really appreciate the increased investment to that part of the capital budget. And in terms of the other things included here, I think, you know, obviously, projects in need. I think there's, we could all probably come up with, you know, dozens more suggestions of things in need of capital funding, and there's a number ongoing. But I think this is a very good and reasonable capital budget. I'm glad we were able to, you know, find a little bit more and increase it over last year, a very tough year. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions? Roll call.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Sorry. I wasn't quick on the draw. I agree. There's so many priorities in the city, and it's with capital money and it's multiple pages here. I concur with Counsel Drinkwater on the paving and sidewalks. Can I ask, this citywide, the bridge repair for Beaver Brook, is that one-time, 3 million?
I'm sorry, Counselor. I was talking to the CFO.
Distracted by the CFO. I happened to make a couple of weeks. So the Beaver Brook is this, 3 million. That's, that's, we've already paid for design, right?
The design is complete. And that's the estimated cost to do the bridge rehabilitation. Obviously, that's been a priority since the state shut it down.
Right, right. And the lower locks, is that our commitment to that, that big project over there? Because I know it's National Park, I know it's.
It's National Park, the Community College, DCR, the university. There's just a lot of stakeholders in that process. This is, you know, what's being proposed is the city involvement, but it's, there's just a lot of.
Multi, it's.
It's enormous in terms of the potential costs out there because of the condition of the structure, the whole system of the lower locks.
Right, right. I mean, just for our own edification, there's multiple, there's been meetings, and there's some serious structural problems with the lower locks. One of, I think, the centipedes of the city. And I'm glad to see that we're putting money in to address it, because if that collapses, that's not a good thing. Would overpass, I just had, on the plaza improvements, what is, what is taking place in the plaza?
There's, there's many areas of broken pavement, stairs that are hazardous. It's not, it's really to try and make it passable and not, people not getting personally injured out on the plaza.
Okay. That makes sense. And lastly, traffic signalization. I know, I know I brought this motion up, I know Counsel Noon did, and maybe other councils. That's good news for that intersection of Westford and Stedman Street. And I think it's important to note to people at home that, you know, putting signalization there, it's important. And folks want it in many other places, but this is $100,000 just to put signals. Dangerous, dangerous intersection, but just, it's very expensive, and I'm glad we're putting it in the capital plan as well. So there's some, there's some other areas. I think this is a good plan, and I'm supporting it, too.
Thank you. Any other questions? Roll call. Oh, Counsel Rourke?
Oh, quickly, Mr. Mayor, thank you. So the million dollars towards the building improvements in the city, my guess is most of those to the firehouses that need it?
I think there's probably a $100 billion list, but it's going to be whatever the top priority is. There's some, I know there's an assessment going on right now that Lands and Buildings is doing of the firehouses in terms of the needs. And so, I can't speak yet, because I don't, I don't think we've seen that current assessment, together with the EMG report. But we're certainly looking at the fire.
Just a quick general question. So when you have things like this, when you know you have large projects, you know, I know the smaller items, such as the library, right? We're waiting on something from the library to get the HVAC system.
Yeah, there's a, there's a, I wish I could think of the name of what it is, but it's on order. We expected it today. But they're hoping it's tomorrow. It's not a celluloid. It's something for the HVAC system.
So small things like that, you say just goes about it, you know, without putting?
Yes.
Thank you.
And we did, because of the heat, close the library early today, because it just got unbearable.
Thank you. Counsel Elliott, you have another question?
If there, if no one else has any other questions, I did have a couple more. Just by way of explanation for people at home, the Clemente Field lighting improvements, that's good news. What will this 500,000 cover? I know there was some electrical infrastructure that needed to be done, but will this cover that, the design, this, and as well as lighting construction over there?
The intent and the project submission from DPD was for lighting in that park. There has been some investigatory work completed already. Based on our experience with other projects, other lighting projects in other fields, the South Common being one that comes to mind, we do think that this project budget is sufficient for that project. But that is the primary goal. Depending on how costs come in, there may be other opportunities. But that is the main goal with the project.
Okay, that's positive, positive news. And we are continuing to improve. The lower police department continue to, I know it's a big, it's a big project, but more Band-Aids. So hopefully someday we'll get, we'll get there. Okay, thank you. I don't have any more questions.
Roll call.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercia?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Nine years.
Okay. 4-3 loan order, capital plan loan order for FY '22. Open the hearing to all those in favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none, that portion is closed. Open up to anyone in opposition? 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 That portion is closed. Any questions? Need a motion to adopt and refer the clerk for 20 days by Counsel Elliott. Second by Counsel Drinkwater. Roll call.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercia?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
That's nine years.
For four ordinance, create cybersecurity administrator position and MIS position and salary. Open up to any, to all those in favor. Open up the hearing to all those in favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none, that portion is closed. Open up to anyone in opposition? 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 That portion is closed.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Counsel Elliott. Second by Counsel Noon. Roll call.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercia?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
That's nine years.
For five ordinance, create grant writer position, grant writer position in the firehouse and establish a salary. Open it up to any, all those in favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none, that portion is closed. Open up to anyone in opposition? 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 That portion is closed. Need a motion to adopt by Counsel Noon. Second by Counsel Rourke. Roll call.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercia?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Nine years.
For six, ordinance, create utility engineer position and water and establish salary. Open up to all those in favor? Open up the hearing to all those in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion is closed. Open up to anybody in opposition? 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 That portion is closed. Need a motion to adopt by Counsel Chow. Second by Counsel Drinkwater. Roll call.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercia?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Nine years.
Utility public hearing, 5-1 Comcast requests installation of communications conduit to provide service from 138 to 160 Middlesex Street. Open the public hearing to all those in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion is closed. Open up to anybody in opposition? 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 That portion is closed. Need a motion to refer the wire inspector for report and recommendation by Counsel Mercia. Second by Counsel Samaras. Roll call.
No roll call.
All right. Communications City Manager motion responses. Any questions on motion response parks and trash disposal? Who's, was that? Any questions on that?
That's yours.
Mine? I'm all set. I read it.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make comment on that one. That was our, that was our joint motion. And I just want to.
Trying to get my notes. Go ahead.
I want to thank Madam Manager and Christine for making the presentation back in May. And just to refresh people's memory, you know, we do, because of the COVID-19, more people are staying home. We have a 40% increase in trash tonnage. That's, that's a huge problem. And the manager's office trying to resolve that, working with the waste management contract, try to, now I'm going to get a new truck, where the city might, is going to take over some of these responsibilities. I think that's, that's a great thing. I just want to make a comment. If the Department, DPW, can maybe go to all the parks around the city, I know that Calvary Park and Clemente Park, because those are two parks in my neighborhood that I use often, I noticed that there's not enough trash barrels. And especially Calvary Park, where you have multiple baseball fields, I've seen some coaches, some parents that bring their own trash bags, and then they hang them on the, on the fence, and they just leave the trash behind. They might forget to take them with you or what have you. But if we have more trash barrels, they would not. you, but if we have more trash barrels, they would not have to bring their own, um, trash bags per se, and, um, just create more, more trash issues, and I see that it's gonna be increased activities by waste management, gonna go around, pick up more trash more often now. So, I just wanna thank you for that report and, uh, for resolving the issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Noon.
Um, Councilor, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilor Chow was correct. Um, speaking of trash barrel, um, you know, the Clemente Park, um, but also at the, um, the business on Branch Street, um, a couple weeks ago, um, I was with Mantra Hand and the State delegation, as well as Councilor, myself was there, um, the neighborhood, the, the business community in that, those area asking, and we've been asking, I think we asked one to twice before, uh, to have a trash barrel at that location, uh, because if you don't have it, people then drop it litter on the street, and some of those business owners, they actually venture into the street, uh, the streets, the sidewalk to clean it up, uh, so maybe a couple of those trash barrel, I think I did that, filed back, I think, three or four months ago, I think with Councilors Elliot, uh, along with the issues of, um, the traffic in that area. So, if the traffic in that area is already in the capital plan, uh, if we could, you know, soon, uh, put some, the trash burial on those, uh, Branch Street businesses, certainly helpful. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Council Mercia. Yeah. Council Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'd just like to make a comment and compliment the DPW, the Parks Department, everyone responsible for going full tilt and cleaning up a very challenging park, and that is the South Common. What a tremendous job they did, not just the other day, but time and time again. So many things and obstacles facing this crew, and yet they made that park pristine with, although it doesn't last that long, but they do a tremendous job. That South Common is used by many neighbors going around the track and exercising, so it's incumbent upon us to make it look aesthetically pleasing, and they do. The Parks Department and the DPW combined together do a tremendous job. And the heat the other day, they were all out there, and while I'm talking about the heat, let's remember the fire department who go out time and time again lately. It seems like every other day there's a fire, and it's hot enough, and they're in a burning building, and so, you know, we don't think about our city employees and how they sacrifice, and, you know, we think, we don't think, we don't think about all the good that they do, and I just, thank you for letting me say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on the motion? Um, next motion response, Poliwalk Pond, Council of Conway?
Yeah, thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll, I'll be brief. I, first of all, I wanna thank, uh, Christine Clancy and her team, the DPW, uh, for doing a, a lot of work in that, in that area. That used to, uh, which we've talked about before on the, on the, on the floor, that area, there was a tremendous amount of dumping that took place. Everything from mattresses to beds to, um, appliances, and it was really sad when you think about it, and, and, yeah, I, for somebody that, like myself, that grew up in that area, I never saw something like that take place, but times have changed, and I certainly am very pleased that, that what the first, the first approach to this was to put up some fencing, and that stopped about ninety percent, ninety-five percent of the, of the dumping, which I, I applaud all the, uh, Christine Clancy and, uh, and her team, uh, for taking care of that. And also in the area where the, the water is, the, the pond, um, I, I, I thank you for the, um, uh, for the response, because we're talking about putting up some signage, uh, in the pond area to, that will help to preserve, uh, the vegetation, the wildlife, and, uh, a lot of people go back there, and they like to enjoy that area, so, again, I, I thank you for that, and also the fact of, uh, alerting the police that periodically they'll take a look at the area and patrol the area and see, um, you know, if there's any, any disturbances. And, and I found it, um, I found it very, and, and by the way, cameras too are gonna be put up there, which I think could be, uh, very helpful. I, I just wanna take, uh, just for a second, in that report, the, the last couple sentences, uh, I, I'd like to just read that, because I think it was, it, it's very, very, uh, important, and in addition to the measures implemented to date, signage regarding animal cruelty will be added to the Poliwalk Pond area, and, uh, per, uh, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter two seventy-two, Section seventy-seven, animal cruelty is a felony crime in the state of Massachusetts, carrying potential, uh, penalties of up to five years in prison, two and a half years in house of correction, and, and certainly a very healthy fine of twenty-five hundred dollars of, for first offense. So, again, I think most people, most people wouldn't know, wouldn't have the slightest idea on something like that, so all of a sudden you see signage, that might be, uh, that might be something that would deter them from causing some issues in that area. So, again, I, I thank all, uh, involved with, uh, with handling that situation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Council Conway. Any other questions? Next motion, yard waste, Council Conway, any questions?
Yeah, thank you. Just, just very quickly, I, I understand the budget situation is very, it's, it's so tight, and, uh, again, we've talked about it a number of times that, uh, on this floor here, that, uh, that, um, you, Madam Manager, and your team have done a, a, a great job. I, I, I will say that as far as the yard waste is concerned, I, it, you know, a number of people have mentioned it to me, and, and I understand, because I cut my own lawn, so I, I run into the same problem. I, uh, you know, it, it hangs around, it gets wet, it's this, that, and so forth, so, um, if, if going forward, uh, I, I, I would, uh, I'd like you to, uh, take a look at that, to see if we can add that in, uh, perhaps for the following year, so that, um, you know, it just makes things a lot, it, it's a lot more, uh, it's a lot cleaner. And, and I think that, you know, one thing that popped out at me in this report, I can't believe somebody would put a hundred bags out. That's unbelievable. I mean, is this a, is this a commercial, uh, company that did it? I mean, I, geez, I cut my grass a lot, but I could never come up with a hundred bags. Obviously, they're using it, it's gotta be a commercial or a, some type of business that, that they were doing that, so...
Literally, that happened. I, I know Commissioner Clancy's here. I do wanna say we've received a lot of calls and complaints about the yard waste, because Waste Management is behind on picking up yard waste, and that's everywhere, uh, and, and Commissioner Clancy and her team have been working with them. Uh, well, let me put it this way, they, they're behind. They don't have enough drivers. They're trying to hire drivers. They've had drivers quit on them. Um, we are fining the company, just, we have the right to do that under the contract. That doesn't get your yard waste picked up, but I want, uh, maybe Commissioner Clancy, I see her in the back, if she wants to come forward and address this, because I know many people watching may have questions about what's happening around yard waste. Even every other week, right now, the company is not able to keep up, and, and I know DPW or Parks have tried to help out so that they can do more, so...
Often, often it is a day, a day late.
Right, or more.
Or more.
Commissioner Clancy, if...
Thank you. If I can just give an update on, on yard waste. So, so that is correct. As of last week, we're about five days behind schedule on pickup of yard waste. Trash and recycling were on schedule. Um, so, really, at that point last week, we put together a recovery plan. How do we get back on track? And this began, really, the week before, a couple weeks ago, we started monitoring it, but last week really setting into a recovery plan. Um, and that recovery plan really comprised of multiple, um, ways of addressing it. So, first is we, we said, Waste Management, you focus on yard waste. We're going to put our streets and parks, um, vehicles into the parks to handle the, the park barrel pickup, to maintain, so that, that is being maintained. So, that was one measure. Um, and then we also, we looked at the fines. You know, that's something that contractually we're allowed to do, so we are moving forward with, with fines, and they will be notified of that. Um, also, like, in the instances where there were excessive bags, um, a hundred bags at some locations, some forty, fifty, uh, we, we've asked Waste Management to only pick up ten bags at each location, and then they will, they're noting those a hundred bag locations. Um, we will, we will monitor those locations, we will also notify them and, and just, I mean, even though it says unlimited in our contract, that really is, you know, we, it becomes, it's, it's really hard to plan for a hundred bag pickup at a location. Um, so that is, we're going on a ten bag limit right now, just to maintain, just to get back on track. Um, and then, so as of right now, based on those measures, Waste Management, as of today, says that by tomorrow, they should be on track. They still have some areas, um, in the Belvedere area, south of Andover Street, to, to pick up tomorrow. That's one of the areas that is behind. There's also some miscellaneous locations throughout the city, and again, they'll pick those up tomorrow. So, I would say by end of day tomorrow, we should be back on track, but I guess long term, there is this issue in terms of their, their staffing. They've allocated resources from other communities, so they have four trucks in each, each day just to catch up. Um, so I think we need to have a meeting with them just to understand, long term, how the, how this plan is in place, 'cause right now we are using our parks and our streets' resources to maintain the park barrels, and that's something that is their obligation. Um, so, we're, we'll have that conversation with them just to understand long term, but we have this recovery plan that will bring us back on track tomorrow.
Thank you. Any other questions?
All set. Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Maple Street, any questions on motion D, Council?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, it seems like everything has been addressed, um, and the neighbors are relatively happy. I just hope that things turn out good for them, and I just wanna talk about the very last sentence that says that all Development Services takes these concerns very seriously and is doing its best to address these issues while keeping the residents informed. So, I hope that this keeps up, because so far, so good, and I haven't received any more complaints, so if we could just keep on top of it and do the right thing, I think some of these two businesses have to be, you know, advised as what they can do and not set up shop under false pretenses. So, thank you for this report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next motion, any questions, Council on American, on the Kenan Square relocation, Council Mercia?
Uh, no, I was keeping in touch with Kara Keith Mullin on this particular issue, and the Monument Committee did support this unanimously to move the, um, monument, uh, from the corner down to where it should have been in the first place, 'cause that's where Mr. Kenan, Kenan actually grew up. Um, I just wanna know through you, Mr. Mayor, to the City Manager, would this notice have arrived to John Cooper, the sign manager?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm told that, um, he, he does have that information. I did speak with Mr. Lamarche the other day, and that he's aware of it.
Um, now, once this does happen and the sign is there, I know the family would like to rededicate this, so if we could make that possible happen with the family, I think this would be wonderful. This is just their request, and that's what they'd wanna do, so...
Well, I'll communicate that to Eric Lamarche, so he can follow up with the family.
Yes, thank you.
American Rescue Plan, any questions, Council Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and this, uh, motion was put forth by, uh, Council Samaras, Council Noon, and, uh, myself. Uh, we were on our same wavelength as soon as we heard that the guidelines was available to discuss this, and again, I wanna thank you, Mr. Mayor, for working for nonprofits for the past fifteen, sixteen months on every other issues, and this is one of the most important issues that, that's coming up, and I understand, Madam Manager, um, I wanna thank you and, uh, Connor for, uh, providing this very concise report. As in the report states, it's a hundred fifty-one page interim final rule, so, for you to, um, provide this concise report. Um, just a major theme I wanna cover real quick, because I know that we're gonna have a subcommittee meeting, uh, with the nonprofits in, in a couple weeks. Um, this, uh, the American Rescue Plan Act, um, you know, the, the main purpose is to support the communities and population hardest hit by COVID nineteen crisis, and, um, so the city of Long Beach, the gateway city, and the population, the makeup of the population, uh, we definitely got, got hit, uh, pretty bad. Um, the money, um, can be used for public health, and can just outline here really quick, um, the communities hit hardest like by the, uh, the public health issues, um, going to provide for premium pay for essential workers, and the money gonna come, uh, through the city in two tiers. Madam Manager, um, one is fifty-four million, because we are a metropolitan designation, uh, and the second one is through a county which no longer exists, but we're gonna get directly in the amount of twenty-one million, so that's equals to a total of seventy-five million. Um, the expenditure, I'm just gonna read this right from the report that was provided, the expenditure of this federal allocation will be a multi-year process to be informed by public input. Um, that's the reason why I want to read that sentence. Um, the key word right there is to, we're gonna get public input, and we are going to have a meeting again with the nonprofit, um, representatives, as well as other stakeholders in the future. It's not gonna be a one-time meeting, it's gonna be multiple meetings, uh, throughout the year, because we are not committed to, or not obligated for expenditure until two thousand twenty-four, and then you have to use by two thousand, uh, twenty-six. And one last comment is that, uh, what Council Noon asked earlier about the use of tax from AOPA, and, uh, Mr. Connor had a great answer, you know, the, um, using the offset tax revenue is not allowed, but I'm sure that the administration would be very creative in terms of how, uh, we can make. Um, I know, um, Council Samaras, Council Noon, and Mr. Mayor probably wanna make other comments, but if after they make, um, their comments of maybe, um, Mr. Baldwin can make a quick presentation, outline this, um, just to give the people know what, what's, uh, is going on, uh, as a preview before we have the subcommittee meeting, and at the subcommittee meeting, I would request Madam Manager to invite all the, uh, nonprofit leaders or stakeholders to be part of the meeting. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other questions? Council Samaras?
Thank you. Uh, Council Chow touched upon, uh, this report, everything, every aspect of this report, but I wanna thank the City Manager, this is a complete report, and Connor Baldwin, uh, as it was stated, you have basically a hundred and fifty-one pages of rules and regulations, and there are many people that are looking at, uh, you know, when you're looking at seventy-five million, or actually seventy-six million dollars to be spent over the next several years, I mean, it's a lot of money, and a lot of people have a lot of ideas on how that money should be spent, and, uh, Council Chow outlined some of the ways, but, uh, I'd like either the City Manager or the, uh, Mr. Baldwin, just to highlight the various areas where the monies will be available. One of the things that really interested me, uh, was that, uh, water and sewer, and sewer infrastructure is a major part of this monies, and, uh, that's really nice to know, because when, when we're looking at the future of this city, especially large cities, water is, water or any problems with water is our future, and we, that's one thing we don't wanna have, and so I'm very pleased with, uh, all of the information you did provide to us, and I think this will help any of the nonprofits that are looking into the, uh, into this information, and I, I think this is on the website, correct? So, uh, our constituents can really, it's a simple, this is a simple report to read, but it's really, uh, has a lot of good information, current information, and I really appreciate the way it was organized and the way it was given to us. But, Madam Manager, if you could just touch upon, you know, what, what does it mean, we pay, we place public sector revenue? Connor Baldwin did talk about some of that monies and what have you, but just to give a highlight.
Madam Manager?
Thank you. I, you know, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the Council. I'll turn this over to the CFO. You, you are correct, there's, um, many details around the use of this monies going forward, the hundred and fifty-one page, um, uh, interim rules that are subject to comment for the next sixty days and could change, but they do give us a good outline as to how this money can be used. And, and one of the uses is to recover losses that are related to COVID, not just for this past fiscal year, past fiscal year, but over the next several years that are part of this. And, and we will be looking very carefully and aggressively as to how we recover those monies for the city. You also pointed out the infrastructure allowable expenses, water, sewer, broadband, and in, for a city like Lowell, we know the demands on water and sewer infrastructure are vast, and so we certainly will be exploring allowable uses for that. But a, a, as Counselor Chow pointed out, this is intended to help those communities that have been hardest hit by COVID, and that's the, that's the purpose, and, and there are many stakeholders around that issue, not just the city, the city is, is one, but also businesses, individuals, nonprofits, many, many, you know, industries. Essential workers are also included in this. And, and, you know, I'll, I'll turn it over to Connor in terms of the nuts and bolts as to how this, how at this stage, we're looking at it in terms of assessing potential uses.
Thank you.
I welcome a sort of overview of this, but we had also referred this to the Finance Subcommittee, because while it's good to get, get an overview, I, I would like to get into the weeds on this guidance and provide direction and get an understanding of what, you know, the city's needs are and any impact that COVID would have, so I'm, we can have an overview, but just sort of remind, I, I don't know if I need another motion, but I do remember that I had made a motion. Once the guidance comes out, let's have a sort of.
Yeah, I, I believe our records show it's referred.
Good, okay, thank you.
To finance, as well as to the nonprofit Subcommittee.
Thank you, Madam Manager, and I'll be very brief, because I do expect a full discussion at the Subcommittee level. In short, it, it is the recommendation of the Finance Department that we prioritize revenue replacement first. This came up during our budget discussion earlier this evening, and we believe that to be the number-one priority, to restore our financial strength. The second would be to target the much-needed water and sewer infrastructure. There are many, many needs in the city. The City Council, just some two years ago, authorized two loan orders for water and sewer for Phase III of the capital plans in those utilities. There is a lot of work that needs to be done. This is a major opportunity for the city to use some of these funds for similar purposes and, in effect, to relieve some of the burden that otherwise would have been placed on the ratepayers. Third being to continue the ongoing response to the public health emergency, and then to reserve the remaining balance for all other eligible purposes, and there are many, and we, we intend to describe all of them and discuss each of them at the Subcommittee level. But as it says in the motion response, this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for the city, so we need to be very careful and very mindful of how we plan and implement the use of these funds. And as I said, I look forward to further discussion at the Subcommittee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin. The one thing is, I wanted our constituents at this particular point to have an overview back home as to what, so that, you know, this might encourage them to either sit in on a Finance Committee when it's on, and also to go to our website to look up this information. But would you also talk a little bit about the broadband infrastructure? Because these are two major issues that the city has to deal with, and I'd just like to give, do you have any more information at this point? What, what that means, what it entails?
Broadband infrastructure is one of the eligible categories under the, the legislation. There's a focus on households and businesses. It can fund projects that deliver reliable service. There are minimum criteria for the speed, as well as it, it can fund completed broadband investments. So there needs to be more research done on that particular component. I, I think that water and sewer are the infrastructure-eligible categories that most like line up best with our existing capital priorities, but broadband is something we can bring for future information to the council.
As an example, many of our students, when this epidemic started, did not have access to broadband, you know, experience and what have you, so many suffered a lot because of this, and so this is really an important part of our future, to be able to ensure that everybody will have access to this clean water and broadband. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the report, very detailed, and I'm sure a number of committee want to take on this issues, including the Utilities and Technology Subcommittees as well, to address issues of broadband. I, I, it seemed clear that the guidelines is really address also a component of inequities in the community, so, you know, as we going forward, talking about it in a nonprofit Subcommittee and/or the Utilities and elsewhere, I mean, and, and, and the Finance Committee, Subcommittee and elsewhere, certainly, this is something that a community can provide input as to how we, other than, you know, as you, Connors, indicated that the, the, you know, offset the loss in revenues, as well as the infrastructures and sewers and water that needed, then the rest, we can really talk about how we going to disperse this money, so that to address the issues of inequities in the community. I'm looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Juneteenth holiday, Counselor Mercer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the report, Madam Manager. We did get some information that it would be a collective bargaining agreement from henceforward, but what about people that are not in a union? How we?
So Counselor, a, a, as we, actually, let me update it. According to the memorandum that we received from Kerry Janess, I would have the discussion for this year to recognize and celebrate the holiday, which we are doing on the Friday before, and then for the library on the June 19th itself. That would include both union and non-union ordinance employees. Going forward, we would expect for those unions that have not bargained yet, that that will be on the table. It's come, we've already had our initial meetings with almost all unions, and, and that is something that we expect will be on the table for collective bargaining. But typically, what happens is something along that line will also be included in an ordinance, we would recognize it in the ordinance positions as well.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Elliott?
So the memo says that we have the authority, but that, yes, it appears that we would have the, the authority, was that the City Council?
No, it, it's, it's my, the authority to.
So you don't need to vote? I mean, I'm happy to vote, just to show.
Yeah, it's, the, the way it works is, it would be my authority, because there's discretion under some of the collective bargaining agreements.
So that memo was from Kerry to you?
Yeah.
Not from Kerry to the council? Okay. So we're going to do that?
But we are doing that, so we did send out a communication to all the employees today to say that, again, exercising the discretion, that it will be recognized on the Friday, June 18th, and, except for the library, which will be June 19th, because that is the actual holiday.
Okay. I think it's a significant holiday, and I'm glad that we're adopting it to recognize.
We did look at all other communities, how they're being handled, it's all over the place, you know, and many are in the same position.
Well, the state has declared it.
The state declared it, and so, but municipalities are, some are doing it, some aren't yet, some are going to collective bargain next year, but we feel, as you have said, in bringing it forward, it is a significant holiday and something, if I, and that's why I asked the Law Department to research and give me their opinion in light of our CBAs or not, you know, or ordinance employees, and they did conclude that I do have the discretion to, to do it, even if it's not in the CBA.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. There will be, putting together a flag raising for Saturday morning at 9:00 on the 19th, so there's been a request, and we'll all be invited, it's in the works right now. Any questions on the last item response, 51A reports? Counselor Elliott, Noon, and Chow, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the report. My intent was never to interfere on, on 51A reports, there was, you know, the, the number was staggering in the city, and the law is very clear. This is a very good report, and I learned a lot from it, Madam Manager, on the, certainly the trends during the COVID crisis, and there is limitations, I understand, on, on what we, we can do, a work group, and the healthcare workers, the teachers, the coaches, the councilors, those, they're, they're all mandated, the police officers, as reporters in Massachusetts, so thank you for reaching out to DCF and the District Attorney, whatever we can do, and I'm sure we will, but hopefully we see a significant trend in the opposite direction on, you know, these, these cases. Thank you.
Counselor Chow, any questions?
Just a, just a quick comment. Counselor Elliott mentioned all the important comments already, but just one of the reasons why we put this motion forward was that this staggering number of 1,348 cases filed in the Grand Lowell, and this report, you know, not that, you know, one child being neglected abuse, that's one child, too many, but the, the report come back clarifying what that number does not represent the actual cases, because when you have that, that report, first of all, the Grand Lowell area cover 13 area, 13 communities, including other towns and city, but it's called Grand Lowell, so we must, we tend to think that's because of Lowell, but it does include other towns and cities in 13 communities. That's the first thing, and the second thing is that one, a child or a family might get reported multiple times, because might be multiple incidents, or maybe the same incident on one family might be, get reported by multiple mandated reporters. That's the second thing. The, the, the third thing is that a lot of these numbers are finally screened out in terms of the number of actual cases being accepted by DCF. So like I said, you know, in any, if it's just one child in our city, in our community being neglected abuse, that's one child, too many, but I just want to make a point, point out that this number does not, the 1348 does not reflect the, the absolute counts in, in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the report, Madam Managers. Clearly, the Boston newspaper's report was alarming. It didn't really, it doesn't seem like they did reach out to this, to the DCF and to find out what exactly happened. You have, as Counselor Chow indicated, you have 1,348 report, and this is, we're talking about out of 13 community over, over three months span, and the percentage is, is also in, reflects as well that the percentage of, of screened out is significant, over 40% screened out in this. So in, in, granted, the DCF also indicated they have proper step and procedures in term of addressing it and, and, and helping families that are impacted by it, even though it's small percent, so this is, this is a good report, and we hope that it continue to be a case that, you know, that the, the number of report reduce and/or screen out, as, as it's not meet the requirement by DCF to be referred to either the DA office and/or the court. So thank you again for the report.
Any other questions? Communications, Madam Manager? Motion to accept all the responses, A through H, by Counselor Elliott, second by Counselor Drinkwater. The Communication, Madam Manager, for the retirement resignation?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to let the council know and ask that this be accepted and placed on file.
Thank you. Need a motion accepted, placed on file, with Counselor Elliott, second by Counselor Conway. Votes?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
If it is possible, I'd like to make a motion, a bundle, 7.1 to 7.4, all the votes, and if anybody has any comments to acknowledge that, thank you.
Sure. Motion by Counselor Mercer, second by Counselor Noon. Bundle all the votes. 7.1, vote authorize City Manager execute maintenance agreement, Mass. DOT. Vote to authorize Manager execute temporary license agreement with swamp locks. Vote to apply, accept, expend Mass. Works Grant. What's that, $1,150,000? Vote to authorize City Manager execute license agreement on Signature Bridge. Any questions? Yeah, motion to adopt by Counselor Rock, second by Counselor Mercer. Roll call.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mercer?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Counselor Rock?
Yes.
Counselor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Conway?
Yes.
Nine years.
Reports, Subcommittee Elections Laws, Redistricting. Counselor Rock?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Quickly, we had a Elections Subcommittee last Tuesday, President, myself and my fellow members of the Subcommittee, Counselor Chow, Counselor, yeah, Counselor Chow and Counselor Elliott, also in attendance, Counselor Mercer, Mayor Leahy, Counselor Conway, Counselor Drinkwater. Attorney Veloso from the Elections Department spoke overview, the new voting system in the city of Lowell, they got into how to pull papers, what a candidate needs to qualify to be on the ballot, including one-year residency prior to the election for the seat in that district. The dates were from June 1st until August 3rd at 5:00 PM. 150 signatures are needed, whether you're in citywide or in district, and those signatures can come from anywhere, from registered voters in the city. Went over how to properly assign the papers, the disc that was involved, that has all registered voters in the city of Lowell. That was also spoken about by Attorney Veloso, and I think he did a good job of explaining the new way it's going to work with both the City Council and with the School Department. He did end the meeting with his contact information, which would be 978-674-4046, and email is elections@loomass.gov. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions? Motion to approve, sure, accept as a report of progress by Counselor Mercer, second by Counselor Elliott. Counselor Elliott?
Mr. Mayor, there's not an agenda item for the Finance Subcommittee, but we did meet this evening, and it's not the clerk's fault, I had scheduled the meeting following the release of the agenda, so I'd like to bring it in very briefly, it's not a long report.
Sure. Counselor Elliott?
Need a motion to suspend?
Motion to suspend the rules by Counselor Elliott, second by Counselor Drinkwater. Counselor Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the meeting, Finance Subcommittee met this evening relative to the annual action plan that was referred, and this is the federal funding that we receive, Community Development Block Grant Home Funds and ESG Funds. It was just more informational, question and answer, there were no, a couple of recommendations. One was by Counselor Mercer, that in the future, when there are presentations that are being made, Madam Manager, that we get a hard copy, only for this purpose, when it's up on the screen, we can all see it, but then if we want to refer back, it would just be helpful, and that was just a request. So again, as I mentioned, there was, there was just a request for a couple of reports. One motion was made by Counselor Noon, second by Counselor Conway, to refer the Downtown Venture Fund. We did get information on the purpose, the intent, funding for the last five years, so motion was to send that to the Economic Development Subcommittee, and we'll schedule that sometime soon, but it was just, again, report on the numerous items, the percentages of, just an overview of the program, quite frankly, that the city is an entitlement program, so I thought it was productive, and, and that's, that's. So, I thought it was productive and that's a report. We'll have a follow-up on the Downtown Venture Fund. But just questions on the public service funding that goes to 21 nonprofits in the city, as well as the bricks and mortar projects, if you will, that were funded to many initiatives in the city. And lastly, our home funds, we spend close to, we receive and spend close to $1 million for first-time home buyer, housing rehab, community development housing and affordable rental housing in the city. So, report of progress. The request, recommendation to bring forward, Mr. Mayor, out of this is a recommendation to approve the annual action plan. And, Mr. Clerk, I don't know if we need motion to suspend because we did open the public hearing, this was referred.
Yeah, we need a motion to suspend to bring it back forward. I did vote on it as well.
The recommendation from the Subcommittee is to approve this. So, I'm happy to make the motion to suspend, bringing the recommendation to vote, the vote to approve the FY 2122 action plan.
All right. Council Conway, you have a question on the, you're going to second it and then you have any question now. Okay. So, motion by Council?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Motion by Council Elliot to suspend the rules to bring in the vote, second by Council Conway. Council Conway?
Roll call on the suspension, I think.
We, do the second reading. Do the second reading.
He has a question for us. He has a question for us.
Sure.
Sure. Did you have a question?
Yeah, I do have a question, Mr. Mayor, through you to the city manager. In regards to the Subcommittee that we had tonight, could you explain to the public, what is the process that we use to partner with a nonprofit?
Thank you, Counselor, and, Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. So, depending on the funds, these are, by and large, federal funds that come to the city. And there's a process by which the city has to advertise and work with the nonprofits who show interest and then, you know, look at the proposals and, you know, I think it depends on which fund, which process it is. But it is something that is open to, whether it's nonprofits, to express interest and work with DPD, file their, you know, statements of interest.
Does the nonprofit, do they submit a business plan?
I think depending on which program they're pursuing, that they would submit a proposal.
So, if we, for example, give monies, allot monies to a nonprofit, is that something that every year, it's just, it's an automatic situation?
I don't think it's automatic, Counselor. I believe, you know, I mean, it depends on the history and track record and all these have to be carefully monitored.
So, if we have a, if we have a specific area that we need some help with in the city, and is that something that we go out and try to find and match a nonprofit? I mean, for example, we have, I mean, I was shocked to find out we have, it's over a million and a half nonprofits in the country. I would assume that they specialize in specific areas, many of them. So, if we had a problem or an issue trying to, we're trying to solve a problem and what we have, our present nonprofits might not be able to handle that particular situation. So, how, what do we do under those circumstances?
I would have to speak to planning and development as far as, if they're not able to come up with a suitable proposal, I would have to, I can get back to you as far as what they do in that particular situation.
No, I'm just thinking, if we're not reaching or we're not solving a specific problem and, you know, what do we do? We can't keep on obviously continuously give money to different groups if we're not solving a problem. And that's one I'm wondering whether, what is the process to do a search?
Well, these, the federal requirements, they, each fund has to each, whether it's grant or they have to be carefully monitored. If you don't mind, I'll ask Christine McCall to, she may have a quick answer here.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Through you to the council. These particular funds, we, the applications, we select applications every year at the same time. We actually have a community action team that reviews all of the applications in addition to our CDBG team. We hold public hearings and then we make allocations based on the CDBG allocation we have, based on the asks from the local nonprofits. And then that group votes on the action plan and then we present it to you all.
Okay. So, if, after examining this, if you find that a nonprofit is, should we say, is not able, we can't find a nonprofit to take care of a specific area, what do we do then? Do we send out invites to various nonprofits?
That's a good question. I think we respond to the needs of the nonprofits. So, they submit the application, they tell us the programs that need funding, they tell us who they're trying to serve. And obviously, we review for eligibility requirements.
So, they tell us the need then?
And then we review and we decide whether or not we agree with that need.
Oh, okay. All right.
And then it is a public process, this being one of them.
Okay. All right. Yeah, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Where are we?
Counselor, Mr. Baldwin does tell me that the nonprofits have reporting requirements to the federal government, if you want to address that.
And to DPD as the lead agency, there are specific, for each grant, CDBG, home, et cetera, et cetera. For the proposals that they submit to the city, they have to submit their outcomes.
Oh, yes. There's significant reporting. So, we don't just write a check and walk away. There's a lot of background information that we do collect in reporting and compliance checks that the city and the federal government do.
I had some individuals that were asking me questions on that and I didn't have the specifics. So, I just wanted to try to clarify how we do pick our nonprofits. Thank you.
Thank you. Need a motion to adopt the vote by Council Elliot, second by Council Drinkwater. Commonwealth, Massachusetts, City of Lowell and City Council vote authorizing the approval and submission of the federal fiscal year 202122 City of Lowell Annual Action Plan to the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Roll call.
Council Drinkwater?
Yes.
Council Elliot?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Council Mercier? Council Noon?
Yes.
Council Rourke?
Yes.
Council Samaras?
Yes.
Council Chow?
Yes.
Council Conway?
Yes.
That's nine years.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
A-2, wire inspection, National Grid Verizon. New England requests relocation of JOPOL at 6169 Rock Street. Motion to accept and adopt accompanying order by Council Drinkwater, second by Council Conway. Petitions. We have a claim, property damage. Need a motion to refer Law Department for a report and recommendation by Council Rourke, second by Council Noon. 9-2, National Grid requests installation of handhole and four-manage conduits connecting two IT at 197 Appleton Street. Refer to, need a motion to refer a public hearing on June 22 at 7:00 p.m. by Council Samaras, second by Council Mercier. University of Massachusetts Lowell requests installation of electrical conduit at Sarah Avenue under Riverside Street for new source feeder for UML North Campus. Refer to, motion to refer to public hearing on June 22 at 7:00 p.m. by Council Chow, seconded by Council Noon. City Council motions. First motion tonight, Council Conway. Request city manager meet with the appropriate department to provide report regarding tree and stump removal. Also include tree maintenance and provide the cost of each procedure. Seconded by Councilor, nobody? Council Elliot? Council Conway?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's been a number of people ask me about this, about the removal of trees and also the, after trees are removed, the stumps are still there. So, you know, what the process was. I said, I really didn't know the process. So, what, I'd be looking forward to a report on this to find out what that process is and when these stump removals, is there a specific time when they are taken care of? Because some of them have been around a long time. And I've gone actually down some, I've gone down a couple of streets that I couldn't believe, the tree is obviously dead. There's no limit on it or whatever. All it is, is just one piece of wood that's probably 15 or 20, I think it's on Clark Road, actually. There's like two or three of them. And I said, why don't they just take that down? I mean, it's on city property. So, and also, somebody said to me, why don't they treat some of these trees so we don't necessarily have to remove them? Because I think we all know, you remove a large tree like this, it's running into the thousands of dollars and perhaps we can treat them and be able to save some money there. The other point that was brought out too was at Fort Hill Park, there's, and we discussed this briefly, Madam Manager, is that there, I think there's four dead ones and they're huge trees. And one of them has a hanging limb that, you know, on a bad wind, it could, it could obviously fall and hurt someone. So, I think we have to get rid of those trees that, you know, that present a danger. So, I'd look forward to the report. Thank you.
Any other questions? If you don't mind, I just have one question from up here, Madam Manager. Can you just, in the report, can you include, like I noticed they planted some new trees on New Street, and can you just provide us with the type of tree that they're planting? And because in a couple instances, they put them back under the wires again. So, the tree's just going to be into the wires again within a few years and then they get trimmed and they don't usually look great again when they trim them as a V at the top, so.
Did you say loose street?
Loose street. There's a couple that are right under the wires again. And it's, I'm just wondering if we have different trees so they don't grow as tall into the wires, or we just planted one type of tree? So, a little information on that. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. 10-2, Council Rourke, request city manager look into eligibility projects under the Massachusetts Parkland acquisitions and renovations communities and the local acquisitions for natural diversity grants. Seconded by Council Noon, second, Council Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The two grants do have some similarities in that they do help cities and towns, you know, acquire land and also to renovate already existing lands that the city may already own. In regards to the land grant, it's more of a conservational and passive park type of grant that include wildlife and forests, fields, things like that. Whereas the park grant is more for existing fields or we want to acquire some fields and to put it to use for recreational purposes and for a little more than a passive area for recreation. So, the reimbursement rate is up to $400,000 for the grant. And Lowell does qualify since we have over 35,000 in population. So, I think it's something worth looking into. I know it's a little bit of pressure on the administration due to the grant deadline is the middle of July, but it's something hopefully that we can look into and qualify for. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye. Next motion tonight, Council Rourke, request city manager contact state officials regarding reopening of registry of motor vehicles.
Second.
Lowell, second by Council Noon, Council Rourke.
Yeah, a common complaint, I'm sure Madam Manager gets this a lot as well. They are still closed. A lot of people in the Lowell area have to go to Lawrence to go inside for an appointment. So, just an update to see if, what and if they do reopen again. Thank you.
Madam Manager?
Thank you. And I did want to report, I've spoken to Rep. Golden. In fact, he was texting me here about it tonight. He's working on it.
Before he texted me, Madam Manager, yeah. So, yeah.
But, you know, he's certainly talking to the officials in getting their assurances regarding this. But we'll keep you posted.
Yeah, we're talking.
We hope it's soon.
Talking to Rep. Golden today about that too. Council Samaras?
No, this motion by Council Rourke is a very good motion because I've talked to a number of people who said to me, first of all, sometimes dealing with the registry when they're open is not a pleasant experience. But when it's not open and if you try to go online, it's very difficult. A number of people had to wait sometimes several weeks just to get a license plate, a new license plate or something like that. And so, a motion like this really is timely at this particular point. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Council Rourke, Council Samaras, request city manager look into options for repaving parking lot at Colley Stadium. Council Rourke?
I'll let Council Samaras take this one. I've spoken to him.
I think we've had a number of calls from parents, even students. The parking lot's a mess at this point. There are some areas where there are holes in there that have to be filled. And if you're not careful, sometimes parents are going in to pick up their children or something like that. They're looking for where their children are. They don't see the hole and can do some damage to their car. But also, when I looked at that parking lot, I've driven over the parking lot. I don't think it's been fixed since I graduated from high school. But I think maybe once, part of it was re-hottopped. And I think this is something that really has to be looked into, Madam Manager. And I think with everything that we've talked about, that we want to do out at Colley Stadium, I think the parking lot should be looked at, you know, as soon as possible to be able to better handle the traffic that is there. And also, in the plans, have they talked about placing trees and things like that? To block, in a sense, try to almost block off the parking lot? Is that any part of any plans to anticipate? You know, you have a neighborhood that's been used to a parking lot there for many, many years, decades, actually. But the thing is, I think it's something that perhaps beside being hottopped, could be covered.
So, we'll get a full report, but the, there's a plan to do the sewer infrastructure at Douglas Road, which is a massive project. That is almost finished in design and will be under construction, which would entail digging up a lot of what you're talking about. So, part of that plan for the sewer infrastructure replacement and redesign down at the end there does include landscaping as well after that's done. So, but we'll get you the report and the timeline, but that is definitely.
I think it's timely. I think, you know, it's a neighborhood that's been under discussion many, over.
Yeah, I just want to put it in perspective because that construction is probably going to go until 2023, you know, and so it would, you know.
It's a plan.
It's a plan for the sewer replacement under, at Douglas Road, so.
Much needed, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Rourke.
And very quickly, existing park, trees that are scheduled to be, or hopeful to be put in. So, in my limited research, this may qualify for a park grant. Thank you.
Could be, yeah.
Council Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did get a memo from a woman in that neighborhood that talked about a tree replacement project plan and that it might involve the islands on that parking lot. So, they, she was just alerting this council about that. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Madam Manager, one thing too. There's a parking lot across from, on Industrial Ave, across from the place where they sell the medications. That's like a grass gravel parking lot. Can we check that out to see if that's suitable for Colley Stadium? I'll get you the address, but you know where Patriot, is it Patriot?
Patriot Care.
Yeah, there's a parking, there's a industry or some company across the street and their whole parking lot is some sort of gravel and grass, so. Might, well, just look at that. Motion 10-6? look at that. Um, motion ten-six, Council Drinkwater requests, uh, City Manager provide update on Mass Department of Public Health, uh, Targeted Outreach Initiative for COVID Vaccine Equity and Awareness in Lowell, seconded by Council Chow. Council Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, we received a report over the, the winter, and this was really just as the, uh, the vaccine was being made available, uh, about many of the, the plans and partnerships that the Health Department, uh, planned to undertake, uh, to make sure that the vaccine rollout, uh, would be equitable and would, uh, we would get it to as many residents as possible. And, uh, it was a good report, it was a very ambitious report. And now that the vaccine is widely available, uh, several months later, to anyone who, who wants it over a certain age, uh, the focus is really on making sure that we're reaching those who, um, you know, may be hesitant at this point, or may have some barrier, uh, that's preventing them from, from getting the vaccine. And, uh, thought it would just be an opportune time, uh, to, to check back in and, you know, see what, uh, progress has been made, uh, see, see what's been done in, in that area. And, uh, just thought it would be in, a helpful update. And, uh, I was spurred to file this motion, actually, because, uh, I read something, uh, last week, that the, um, the Secretary of, uh, Health and Human Services for the state, uh, had, had made a comment that, uh, through their Targeted Outreach Initiative, uh, that targets twenty communities disproportionately impacted by COVID, uh, of which we are one, um, they're really honing in and, and, uh, trying to get down at the, the actual, like, door-to-door canvassing level to make sure, um, that all residents are, are getting information about the vaccine, that are getting access to it, um, if, if they want it. So, um, I thought that was interesting, and just thought it would be good to get an update on, um, the sort of on, on-the-ground efforts that, uh, I know are currently going on in the city. So, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Next, last motion tonight by myself, request Economic Downtown Development Subcommittee meet in cooperation with the DPD and the Mayor's Office to hold a meeting, uh, with the downtown businesses to discuss the Rapid Relief Plan to ensure DPD, uh, and if we can assure DPD sends out invites to the downtown businesses. So, seconded by Council Elliot. Um, so, just another motion to help explain some of the, um, how we're gonna spend the Rapid Relief money. So, motion speaks for itself. All in favor, say aye. Any announcements?
So, Mr. Mayor, could, um, no, just, just on your motion, if you, if you or your staff want to reach, give a couple of dates, then we'll set up the meeting. Do we want to have it here, or do we want to have it downtown, the Economic Development Subcommittee?
Uh, we'll figure out a good spot. Madam Manager?
Yeah, we can, we'll coordinate, um, Mr. Chairman, because, um, I, I know the, there's been a survey done by DPD of the downtown, and, and they have a presentation. Um, so, we can may, maybe here, if it can be televised in the presentation, and invite the downtown business owners here as well.
Sounds good.
Madam Manager?
Uh, just, uh, an announcement, um, this is in connection with Clay Pitt Brook Climate Resiliency Stormwater Management Plan. Um, we're seeking feedback from the community. Um, and the purpose is to identify strategies that will address the intense flood that previously was experienced in Patacaville. It's funded through the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Action Grant, and we are now accepting responses through a public survey, uh, which can be found online at LowellMA.gov. The city's also hosting a virtual public meeting about the plan on Wednesday, June sixteenth at six-thirty. So, uh, if you look at the website, there's the survey, there's details how to, um, answer, and it answers questions. But we just want people to know that we are trying to get this survey, as many people, um, anywhere in the city, but especially in Patacaville that may have been adversely affected. And then, lastly, um, Mr. Mayor, I just want to briefly thank the council for their support on the, on the budget proposals and the capital, uh, plan tonight. Um, I want to give specific thanks to, uh, everybody on my staff, Connor Baldwin, the CFO, Allison Chambers, the Deputy CFO, uh, Kara Keef Mullin, the Assistant City Manager, Phil Jeffroy, uh, the whole staff. And I want to specifically thank all the department heads who've worked so hard, uh, this year, and have worked very hard on their budgets, uh, and just, uh, let them know how much we do appreciate what they've done through a very tough time, and what they continue to do working for the city. So, um, just, uh, special thanks. But, but again, Mr. Mayor, thank you to you and to the council for your support.
Thank you. Um, Council Elliot?
Um, speaking of department heads, and this will probably be a motion to suspend, what is the status of our audit of search, so?
Oh, yeah, we forgot. So, motion-
I'll second the motion.
-by, yep, Council Elliot, sir. Um, so, the resignation was handed in, um, today, you all saw that. Um, and then, what we probably, what I would suggest, we should talk and have, um, the manager's office work with Human Resources, and I think we should do a, uh, the search, how high is somebody to search?
I think the process we have put in place, uh, in the past has not been successful, certainly, certainly. Uh, but it also has not been as efficient. So, I'll make a motion that we designate the Office of Human, um, Human Resources in conjunction with the manager to hire recruiter, or to seek a recruiter to go out and see if we can identify the position and/or any obstacles associated with our current or lack recruiting efforts.
Right, okay. Seconded by Council Rook. Any questions for Council Rook?
Yeah, I like Council Elliot's suggestion. I would actually, um, suggest that one member of the council be on that. You know, I know Council Elliot's the Finance Subcommittee, um, you know, Chair, so if he wants to do it, or is willing to do it, or a mayor's pick, if, if not, um, you know, somebody from the council, I think, should be part of the process, since the person will be working for us. But, you know, to his point of the manager, hu- human resources, and, uh, you know, a member of the council, I think would, uh, would be a better way of doing it than what's going on last few, uh, efforts. Thank you.
Why don't you just do it through my office, since we talk all the time?
Well, you know, Council Elliot's been the Chair for Finance for, you know, far as I can remember. So, if he's willing to do it, I would, I recommend him to do it.
Okay. Council Noon?
I'm, I'm glad that Council Elliot brought it up, because I plan to file a motion on this. While we add hiring someone to do a search, while we add with the audit, why don't we add assessors, as well as the, uh, uh, traffic engineer? Those, I mean, really, we've been struggling with that, and the assessor, uh, our assessors retire very soon. So, let's put everything together, let's do that once and for all.
Okay, thank you. We'll add that to the motion to Madam Manager to look at-
Yeah, well, we will, um, so, we, we, we can certainly explore that. Obviously, the two of them are in a different category, but we'll, we'll explore that, come back and report through you, Mr. Mayor, and, and, wherever you want us to report on where, where we're headed on, what we're hearing on a recruitment firm, and then take it from there.
Okay, thank you. Um, couple of quick, well, quick announcement. Next Tuesday, I think you all got the memo that next Tuesday, the, uh, vaccini, vaccine, um, site on bottom, on Pataca Boulevard is closing, and next Tuesday's their last day up there, so they're all, you're all invited to go up between twelve-thirty and say one-thirty, just to say hello, and, um, they're wrapping up, they're having a, a little get-together for everybody. Thank you, everybody. And just one other thing that Council Mercier had mentioned, um, I think we want to thank the Fire Department. They've been extremely busy this year. They do a great job for us, and, uh, very dangerous work. So, we, um, note that the Fire Department is doing a great job for the City Lowell, and we thank them all. So, motion adjourned by Council Elliot, seconded by Council Drinkwater. Thank you.